Welcome, everyone. It's 5:30. I will call a special meeting on January 31st, 2023 to order. And this is in person and via Zoom. So Suzanne, can we please take your call, please? Councilmember Barbadilla?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chula?
Here.
Councilmember Leah?
Here.
Councilmember Fran?
President.
Mayor Montana?
Here.
I found this on the web.
Sorry.
Great to start on the medium with some good humor. So everyone, let's rise for the hightech meeting. And to the Republic, for which spanners, one nation, under God, Indians as well, liberty and justice. Members of the public are invited to sit on any item that does not appear on today's agenda. The floor will be limited to two minutes. Okay, so I don't see anybody. Anybody want to speak on the public? Saying none. Is there anyone from Zoom?
There is no one from Zoom.
Okay, with that, announcement of conflict of interest and campaign contributions for our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I ask you, Mayor, and each of the council members, whether he or she has any financial or personal conflict of interest related to any of the items on today's agenda.
Thank you. Councilmember Barbadilla? Vice Mayor Chua?
None.
Councilmember Leah?
None.
Councilmember Fan?
None.
Mayor Montana?
None.
Let the record reflect there are no reported conflicts.
Okay, that is a bit... So now we are, I'm going to read the code of conduct. So we have this code to kind of keep us on track, making sure that we're respectful and courteous. Words, tone, and body language do matter. Model civility, avoid surprises, praise publicly and criticize privately. Focus on the issue, not the person, and refrain from using electronic devices while on the council dais. And this one here, we need to be respectful because people in the audience are requesting our full attention. And so I asked the council members to refrain from using the word selfless. Unless it's an emergency thing. So disclose, disclose conflict of interest and affiliation related to agenda items. Separate governing from campaigning. The council speaks with one voice after making a policy on issues. Respect the line between policy and administration. Council will hold each and every one of us accountable to our code, to this code of conduct. Moving on to the approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any changes to the agenda? We'll approve the agenda. Is there a second? Second. So it was moved by Vice Mayor Chua and seconded by Councilmember Montana. And so we will call for vote. Councilmember Barbadilla?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chua?
Aye.
Councilmember Leah?
Aye.
Councilmember Fan?
Aye.
Mayor Montana? And I am none. Now moving on to agenda items. So receiving staff presentation on the preliminary fiscal year 2024 through 2033. This is a 10-year general fund financial forecast and request feedback on prioritization of council referrals and desired service levels to inform the fiscal year 2023 through 2024 budget development. And staff, the staff president will be doing the presentation on our floor live, financial director. Thank you.
Mayor Montana, this is Steve McCarrick, City Manager. I'm going to provide just my opening remarks. Good evening, Mayor Montana, council members, members of the Republic. It is my pleasure to present the preliminary fiscal year 2024-33 10-year general fund financial forecast. For the city will do this. As part of this discussion, we will review the top-line results of the recent FM3 community survey, department accomplishments and work plans, and council referrals. The really good news is that we're providing great levels of service as confirmed by our community survey we presented on January 17th. And we have been recognized for innovations in various city operations, including planning, public works, and finance. We continue to recover from the economic effects of the COVID-19 pandemic. And it's great to see the December Mopetis workforce unemployment dropped 2.2%. This is lower than the pre-pandemic figures. And Finance Director Lo and I will discuss further as we evaluate the economic outlook. We continue to be tempered in our optimism about the year ahead and grateful for the collective effort that got us where we are today. City council leadership has been remarkable in timing financial decisions and their insistence in long-range planning. And Assistant City Manager Shwene Kanta will highlight our accomplishments and demonstrate the city's leadership and services that sets Mopetis apart in our governance. Our top three revenues, property tax, sales tax, and transit occupancy hotel tax are all trending upward. Not so much for license permits and fees, as they are kind of softening in this area. Now let's touch on the economy. We're keeping a close eye on the Federal Reserve's interest rate hikes and mandatory de-employment. The Consumer Price Index peaked in late 2022, but we're now seeing a favorable downward trend. The same thing is happening with fuel costs dropping tremendously. With all these economic trends, the general consensus is that 2023 may be a slow statement in my deep recession, meaning the economy should avoid an outright downturn. Meanwhile, here in Mopetis, we're continuing to monitor the economic landscape with business outreach, economic indexes, and revenue experts. We also leverage our local dollars for assertive grant efforts, legislative advocacy, and my in these priorities, actually, my in these policies. What you hear from, what you will hear from staff today is a forecast that assumes moderate to conservative revenue trends. It does not propose any use of the city's rainy day reserves. Although we see key revenues trending upward, we still advise fiscal discipline and prioritizing balancing these funds in addition to any new services. As a reminder, we defunded numerous positions during the COVID pandemic, some of which remain defunded as we prioritize services. The highlights, this highlights the staff for passing challenges we currently have in providing existing services, let alone taking on new projects. Please keep this in mind when providing feedback on the top council priorities in the budget process over the upcoming months. You may recall that over the past two fiscal years, I promised our credit study sessions, I started to have promised to our credit study sessions with a financially conservative, a dollar saved as a dollar earned, which to our budget work. And we have structured the budget under council's seven areas, seven priority areas, as the pillars of our city budget. They are community wellness, economic development, environment, governance, neighborhoods and housing, public safety, and transportation. Later this evening, staff will present the council referrals, and in doing so, please be mindful that these referrals may have a budget impact and increase spending. Speaking to our general fund, our reserves remain critical to our financial stability, and I'm noting that these funds do remain strong. We continue to be diligent in directing any budget surplus during COVID pandemic recovery and restoring our rainy day reserves. While these funds are robust, we have other critical investment areas that our Assistant City Manager will discuss further this evening. I thank the city council for your leadership as we continue to recover and evolve. I thank the public as we greatly appreciate all your engagement and support. And please stay tuned for upcoming budget-related community town halls as we look forward to your participation. But all our city staff, thank you for communicating with me and the executive team throughout the year. You have been stellar on all levels of work, working together to serve Mopetis. Meanwhile, we have the executive leadership team here today. They all play a part in this process, including our newest member, Deputy City Manager Makina. And with this, I will turn it over to Assistant City Manager Shwene Kanta, who will present the recent city accomplishments and work plans, followed by a financial presentation by Finance Director Lo and I. Lastly, council referrals were presented by Shwene. I'm looking forward to this evening's discussion and council's feedback. Thank you.
Steve, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Shwene Kanta, Assistant City Manager, very excited to be here today to share some key financial information with you and to solicit your feedback on priorities and services you would like to see in the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget. So as Steve mentioned, I will start off by sharing some accomplishments focused for year 2023, the current year we are in, and some key work plan items for the rest of this year. And in the interest of time, I will just touch upon a few highlights because it won't be impossible. It's just a fraction of everything that we are doing. I would like to take a moment to acknowledge all of the department heads who are here. They are available to provide additional information and respond to questions. Our city attorney, Michael Muntala-Paxi, as well as our amazing staff for continuing to do such a great job for the city and community. And of course, with your continued leadership and guidance from the city council and a very supportive community, excellent work by our staff, we feel we've been able to provide high-quality services and programs to our residents and businesses as you heard from the community survey very recently. And this is despite all the challenges that were brought about by the impacts of the pandemic, the war in Ukraine, supply chain issues, severe weather events, high inflation, all kinds of challenges. And we've, we've actually managed to weather them pretty well. So I mean, that's been very much a collective effort and under the leadership of this council. So thank you for that. So if we can go to the next slide, please. And so as Steve mentioned, this is our agenda. I'll cover the accomplishments, work plan items. Director Li will cover the next three bullets, the survey, the economic outlook, and the tenure forecast. And then I'll talk about some potential investment needs that we're already seeing for next year and beyond. And then we'll spend some time on the council proposals, the ones that have been prioritized by council but need additional funding or resources. And we hope to get some direction from you on that. Next slide, please. This is again, I think you're all pretty familiar with this. This is the city service areas. As you know, we have four city service areas. And it's basically to allow departments to collaborate well in order to provide seamless services to the community. And so again, I underlined me, this community development, which is building safety in housing, economic development, engineering, the land development part of engineering, fire prevention and planning. And then I also have leadership and support services, which is all of the internal service departments like finance, HR, city clerk, communications, and IT. And then right now, as Steve mentioned, we have our new Deputy City Manager on board. So he's going to be taking on community services and sustainable infrastructure. We're not having him present today. He just joined us yesterday, but he's going to be taking it all in. So he's overseeing public works and wrecking community services and the CIP portion of engineering. And then for public safety, police and fire, the city manager and I have had him on. So that helps with that up right now. They can go to the next slide. So some of the key accomplishments, again, just touching upon some highlights. If we go to the next slide, please. So something we're pretty proud of, and we know this is only possible because of council. It's continued fiscal discipline, and we preserve the general fund reserve. And that is a big deal because we were able to balance the budget while enhancing services again, despite all the challenges. And part of that is because of the fiscal discipline shown by the council. We have also initiated, because again, the need for additional services always continues, and we have limited revenues. So we have to always look for opportunities to leverage other funding opportunities. And so we have established a citywide grants program, and we're continuing to work on, we have regular meetings with leading grant consulting firm, and they're helping us. So their scope is really to help us look for grants and also to write, write applications, grant applications, working with our staff, and then to help us if we do need to see the grants to help us with reporting. And so we're working with them actually just currently on a couple of pretty key grants for public safety and parks for needed funding. And then the next slide, the next, no, no, I'm sorry, the next bullet. So we've continued implementation of the Mopetis American Rescue Plan and Funding Investment Plan. As you know, we received almost $17 million in that. And we have council through over 30 programs that are both serve the community. So vulnerable residents, our businesses in need that really felt the impacts of the pandemic, and then also city infrastructure and programs. And so I want, we are heavy talking about this in more detail on February 21st. So we are not be covering all of the programs, will highlight a few, but happy, I mean, we have department heads here. If you have any questions on any specific programs, we're obviously happy to provide more detail. So some of the key programs related to economic vitality, as you know, Small Business Assistance Plan program, and that helped 343 businesses with grants for a total of over $1.45 million of our crowdfunding. We also assisted the 13 hotels, the amount of $130,000. We funded various workforce development programs, $300,000 for that to assist both youth and adults in continued learning and career development. We funded park improvements, also catalytic converter debt prevention programs of $200,000 for that. And then almost $1 million in our funding to incentivize the building of accessory dwelling units. And again, we have, we have a lot more, so happy to answer any questions with that. We also some key milestones on the public safety side. So we deployed our ambulance in August, so this fiscal year, and our ambulance responds to calls in need of advanced life support. So through the middle of January, we responded to 683 such calls and transported 43 patients. Another key accomplishment, as you know, is the opening of Fire Station 2 in October of this year. This is our second reserve fire station after Fire Station 1. Similar to other stations, about 60 to 80% of the incidents of the calls are EMS-related. And this is a station, a new station was opened after about 20 years. So the last new station was Fire Station 1 in 2000. We also completed implementation of a new police records management system, which is always a big undertaking. So that was a big milestone accomplishment, and we transitioned to a new incident reporting system, which is required federally mandated. It is much more granular than the previous system. So it is important to know that although the volume of crimes due to this new system may seem significantly larger compared to historical numbers, it is because all crimes involved with a specific incident are recorded. So there is a difference in the methodology of reporting. We've hosted several public safety, community engagement events, and enhanced our social media presence, strengthening connections between our public safety staff and the community continues to be a high priority. And it really builds trust, and we see that reflected in our community survey every year. So we've done several events. Police has done coffee with cars, conjugal cars, we said with cars, they have a lot of fun with, laws on patrol. And then fires done, the holiday tour of rights, as well as a toy drive, and again, enhancing our social media. Next slide, please. On the economic development side, small but mighty economic development team has continued their efforts to attract and retain businesses. And they proactively engage businesses, facilitate and permit assistance for businesses either expanding or locating in Mopetis. And this is as we know, our future this hotel, and we continue to look for opportunities for the benefits of that. And to add jobs. And some examples of success on this front include Corset and Human, BD Biosciences, which is a huge project, the big extension of TDK that I think some viewer at. Apple is locating some additional facilities here. Seccona, Battery Technology, and then Prologis is doing a speculative and set more like. So pretty big projects, looking forward to jobs created and revenues generated by we. We have, last week, council approved, adopted the city's housing elements. Again, this was a huge work effort, fast app, and we're very proud that we're one of the few cities that met the management deadline and were able to bring forward something that we are proud of and truly have a commitment. We continue to work with the county and nonprofits to address affordable housing, homelessness prevention to our rent relief program, and then also unhoused services. As you know, we fund a contract with the county to both, to provide services to the unhoused and to also place them on a list for supportive housing. And we've continued on mobile shower and laundry services. And then we, technology is integral, as you know, to all of the programs and services we now provide to the community. So as you heard earlier, we transitioned to a new police records management system. We also implemented a new public records management system that allows us to be more efficient and also ensure compliance, legal compliance with the public records. We council awarded a contract for a new website, and we're looking forward to implementing that as well as a new agenda management system and currently evaluating a new HRIS and financial management system. We've also implemented several measures to strengthen driver security, such as a network threat detection system, a user reading program, and multi-factor user authentication. So if you could go to the next slide.
Shwene, do you want us to ask questions during your presentation or after?
Up to you. Whether the council wants, happy to stop and respond to questions, or we could go through and come back, whatever, whatever works for us.
What is my, what is, what do my colleagues, do you want to ask questions impromptu, or do you want to?
I think, what's your mic?
I don't really want that much. I have a loud voice, so it's okay. So I think I did real, this is the summary, so forget it, the details. I think that's when we can probably ask questions, right?
Yes. And I, what I could suggest, we could also stop up to different sections, if that's helpful. So I could go to the work plan items, and we could stop there if you want it, and then move into the next.
Okay, great.
And so then this is the last slide of the accomplishments, and then I'll have a few work plan items. So again, a pretty big milestone achievement this year already. So council adopted three master plans, utility master plans. That's a big, big work effort again, the water, wastewater, and storm. And based on that, so that, that gives us a roadmap for how we want to invest in infrastructure on the utility side. It also formed the foundation for completing our water and sewer rate studies. And I'll talk about that as a work plan item, because we'll be bringing that forward to you soon. And then we also adopted an updated climate action plan. We're looking forward to that implementation, and that's going to help us also leverage funding opportunities as we implement our climate action plan. The smart city infrastructure project, as you know, some of you were, when we celebrated that event, we implemented major components of the smart city infrastructure project. Very pleased to be recognized as one of the top 50 smart cities in the world. And to our contract with NG, we converted all street and park lines to LEDs, which will save electricity and reduce maintenance hours. We, as you know, installed solar panels right outside here, the senior center and community center. We're close to completion on the automated water meter infrastructure system, which will really help with annual leak detection and help the community manage water use. We've initiated the citywide traffic safety assessment and modeling projects, which is our high priority for the council. We weren't able to initiate this during the pandemic because traffic patterns were basically very irregular. And so we have now begun work on this. So the citywide traffic, traffic safety assessment, we began in fall of 22. We anticipate completion at the end of this calendar year. And key deliverables include guidelines related to traffic safety toolbox, as well as a prioritized list of safety improvement projects. And then of course, those you will consider as part of future CIP discussion. And then the citywide traffic modeling project covers traffic counts and field observations. And that's the major signalized intersections, but it's across the city. And this project will develop recommendations for cool place to reduce traffic congestion and these major intersections. On the CIP side, we've completed five projects, some of those really big projects like Fire Station 2, Mechanus Park, always so do the interiors. We also did the Trails Master Plan, and then on an ongoing basis, the annual street resurfacing project. We began construction of three projects and then design of nine projects, including some of the park improvements. And again, the annual street resurfacing project is wanting to know that that improves density low, which has been a high priority. We also began implementation of the Mopetis on-demand. I don't see that, but okay. But we, we should begin implementation of the Mopetis on-demand shuttle, so just wanted to note that. Oh, okay. So that's the Mopetis Smart Shuttle with a grant from VTA for 1.2 million. I did want to note that the way we have it structured now is a hub and spoke model and the ridership. Because people are not back at the workplace as much as we had anticipated. The ridership is lower than we projected because we saw a big need on from the business side. And so we are talking to VTA about changing it to a point-to-point model, which would, which would increase ridership significantly more, that you could take it from anywhere to anywhere in the city. So we're working with them to see if we could change that. And then ADUs, again, we've continued to pursue many strategies to incentivize the building of ADUs. And that includes the toolkit that was developed by planning, offering ADU Mondays, streamlining our permit process, and also waiving permit fees. So both for new ADUs as well as legalizing ADUs that were built without a permit.
Vanessa, good question. What is that FS2 again?
Fire Station 2.
Thank you.
Next. So again, rest of the fiscal year for the remaining months through June, a few key work plan items. Go to the next slide. So developing a balanced 23-24 budget that maintains as well as enhances service levels to the Mopetis community and also invest in infrastructure. This is obviously developing and approving a balanced budget, of course, one of the most important work plan items. It guides all of our work and how we allocate resources, and we'll be discussing this in more detail through the rest of the presentation. The council recently approved moving forward with public outreach for water and sewer rates, and we will be bringing the rates to you for adoption on March 24th. So we've started the proctuating noticing process, as well as, as we discussed with you, we're doing an extensive community outreach process in multiple languages. So we will bring all of that information back to you as part of the rate adoption. Um so we will bring all of that information back to you as part of the rate adoption. Um and then, as you know, we kindly fund this one water utility, the general fund. So we talked to you about this as well, that we're working on bringing forward to you different funding options. Because it is a utility that requires investment in the infrastructure. And our reason for the general fund to continue to support it is, it's not a very viable um and a sustainable strategy. Um recreation fees, uh council in March of twenty twenty one. You approved a cost recovery policy for different recreation programs. So depending on the type of program and who benefits from the programs, there's different groups and different uh cost recovery ranges. And so because of the pandemic, again, we did not bring that forward because usage was not normal. And so what we solely want to bring uh things forward in terms of when we talk about a masterpiece schedule. Which will be in good for us, I believe. So that's when we will bring that forward to you. Uh the milpitas metro plan, that's the, you know, huge item in the making that is, is going to really. Uh lay out the vision of how the area around the climate center develops. Um so the geographic area of the current task of the climate area specific plan will be modified for the metro plan. And other council has had several uh sessions um with different components of the metro plan. So we'll be bringing that forward to you next week on February seven. And then the next steps after that will be really updating the infrastructure plan, including the innovation district. And then updating the impact fees based on the infrastructure plan. We also have another big specific plan project underway, which is the main street gateway specific plan awards underway. We will be bringing that to you um with kind of interim milestone discussions. And then you also approved just recently um a contract to uh do a comprehensive zoning update. Given that the general plan was adopted, this is the next step to make sure that we don't lack all of it in our zoning. That's improving all the specific plan. Um and then the emergency management plan, again, something council approved. Last year, we are working on all the different kind of annexes. And that helps us prepare for all kinds of kinds of emergencies that unfortunately we've come too familiar with. Facing wildfires and pandemic and, you know. So we will have separate documents as to how to respond in different types of emergencies. And then uh we would, again, these were master plans that were adopted. I talked about the utility ones and the climate action plan. We also approved the trails by way and pedestrian master plan and so implementing projects from these um is another key work fun item. And we go to the next slide. We continue implementation of the R F investment plan, again, a huge effort that involves uh pretty much every department um in the city. Uh but we're happy that we're able to provide much needed assistance to uh the business community and, and to um kind of vulnerable populations in our community. Um I talked about the grant opportunities, this is something we uh quite focused on, trying to see how we can leverage funding for all of our needs. Um we will be, uh we've initiated a citywide strategic communication plan. I think you've, you've had conversations with our consultant, we anticipate completion this spring. And this will be developed based on best practices, stakeholder interviews. Um and we'll also include a crisis communications component. Um we, you awarded a contract, as I mentioned, for the website and we're uh excited to begin that implementation. Uh because we know it serves as a very uh critical virtual gateway to all of the city's programs and services. And then we will be this spring initiating the public art master plan and the historic resources master plan. Um and this will establish, uh the public art master plan will establish the framework of public art within our city. Including inventory of existing public, public art face making and the use of public art funds that are set aside. And the historic resources master plan includes handling of uh historic resources, updating the city's landmark policy. For public and private resources, establishing correlation and for identifying potential funding mechanisms. And creating a program for historic resource. So um it can be a pretty large effort. Um then uh the next bullet, continuing to support policies and programs. In terms of initiatives on the workplace, this fiscal year, we've completed. At beginning, season training for council staff and commissioners. And we will continue to support these um policies and programs. We have, uh we, we started our mentoring program um in. Did a LinkedIn learning pilot and continued that and that's been very well received. Um so focus again on sort of continued learning, professional development, cross training. To allow us then to do better second plan. And then updating the personnel moves and regulations, I think we've talked about this before with you. Uh they are very old and we've already uh put in quite a bit of effort, making sure that we are uh staying compliant. Uh legally, but also uh best informing best practices. And uh we are also, we will be negotiating to MOUs, um so to employee group, the uh MOUs end this June. So we will initiate that in um spring around March. And with that, we're going to go into the next section. So if you wanted to have a discussion of questions related to the accomplishments and um work fun items, we're happy to. Pause here.
I, first, uh I, I just have to for now. Can you give us a timeline on the whole thing, the dates, if you will? I would like to see that.
For the budget. Oh, we have, we have a slide.
Oh, you do? Yeah, okay, both are waiting there. The, the thing that I noticed that I didn't see is the sweet, sleepy one.
Uh we, we are coming to you um for the discussion on the pilot and option. And next couple.
Okay, so this, just to say that, please, that's important. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else want to, I mean, I have a lot of voice.
That's from Berlin. It is being streamed over Zoom, so if you wouldn't mind.
That was a big start.
All right, um first I want to congratulate the team for the housing element. I think it's a great accomplishment. Although I'm new to this, I didn't start from the very beginning, but congratulations. It's a great thing for our city. And I know that there are many citizens out there that are struggling together and we are part of the force to be. A water bridge. My next question is the ADUs, the ninety units, the ninety, eighty use that we um. I'm sure. Do we know if those are for low income, very low income? And do we know if those are for rent? Or is it the owners putting ADUs in there for that one use?
So all those kinds and maybe uh. No, they're just. Yeah, so um so these come in to uh, you know, for permits, the ADUs come in for permits. So it's the owners that um basically submit an application whether they're going to rent it out. There's no deed restriction associated with them, so they're going to rent it out or not, we, but that's until. So what we're doing is we're trying to promote the building of ADUs by all these different means, right? Tools, permit waivers, but there's no deed restrictions associated. Um and we will see here.
I want to add because um the council had to have this discussion earlier about. I'm sure, I mean, if you're in some pack, about portability by design in ADUs was um agreed upon as a real popular way. An effective way to create more housing units on existing properties and land costs are not there to construct new, new units. And the type of unit is more affordable than a regular floor. So in the management of our single family neighborhoods and allowing large increases in um housing through the AD component. So the market suggests that because the cost is lower to develop, that rent will be lower. They're smaller units, more efficient and provides a huge community, whether it be with family members or for rent. But as um, as Assistant City Manager, as I mentioned, there's no deed restrictions, so we don't monitor. Or required information that you're asking about the level of what you are using.
And just in a few minutes, can you explain to me or at least what the emergency management plan is? I haven't heard it before.
Sure, I, I also, I just want to make sure for details to refer to um department heads. But it's something that um uh file is basically worked on, working with other departments. And it was something that council adopted, it's the emergency um action. Emergency operations plan.
Yeah.
And um I'll, I'll um defer to Chief Stelling, but we are, as I mentioned, we're. The overall plan was approved, but it also has something called annexes. And those are focused on types of incident, but then how would we organize and respond and communicate in those um incidents? So you know, even how we communicate with folks that maybe um need more assistance. And what things we would have in base with its language is or physical disabilities or things like that. So um I'll let.
So basically. So this is part of a operations emergency management plan. Um and it's basically sets annexes that are basically pre-plans or guidelines for us to operate as a city. Uh and utilize those plans so that they're some avoidance of chaos. So it's, it's basically a pre-plan for earthquakes, floods. Um and we're currently working through those um. Right off the top of my head, I can't remember how many we have, but um we're, have gone two sets of the annexes out to. Executive leadership team to review and publish. And a consultant has, I believe, all of them completed, we're just processing through them and sending them on.
Really happy. Happy to provide additional information. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, anyone else? I have a few, uh on page six. If you can put that slide back up. And that is, that is, that's that's it. So that's on item number three, continue to work with county and nonprofits to address affordable housing. Oh, actually, no, it's that, it's the first one. Facilitate over one hundred forty business, business engagements and permit assistance, leading to business attraction, expansion and retention. So my question is, if you facilitate, facilitate over one hundred forty business engagements. Uh does that mean that you gave them permits? Is that, because um from my understanding, it's the backlog on the permits and um. So I'm wondering, is that, is that what that means? I'm looking for some direction.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and City Council, Alex Andrade, Director of Economic Development and your interim housing. The, as it relates to the business engagement and permit assistance, so the economic development team has three different performance metrics. One of which is business engagements, the other one is permit assistance, and then the third one is branding. So what you see here is a combination of business engagements and permit assistance. So oftentimes, when businesses or development teams are needing assistance, they'll come to economic development to help facilitate. And so economic development is not the entity that will issue a permit. That's usually, of course, it could be planning, building, um fire and other departments. So one hundred forty business engagements and permit assistance. When we go out and we are building relationships, it doesn't always result in a permit. But we're definitely engaging businesses and helping them in various ways.
Okay, so um I guess maybe that question is to uh Director Ned Thomas. Um how many permits have we given out this year? Is this a time to ask you or is it, are you going to do another presentation on that?
I thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and I'm just thankful to be here tonight. I don't have a number off the top of my head, we could um look at the number of traditional use permits that go to businesses. Um it, it might even, I mean, there's a number of different permits or licenses that go out to businesses. We could also look at business licensing to see new business licenses that were issued by the city. And then you might also look at renewals of business licenses.
Okay, so now I'm just, I'm just saying that because when you get permits and licenses, you're bringing in revenue to the city. And that's our goal, that's one of our main goals, you know. So I want to make sure that we, you know, that we, that that's happening and without hurdles and it's streamlined, just like we streamline the ADUs. We should also be streamlining these business permits and um and licenses. Because that's the bottom line is to bring in revenue, bring in revenue to serve the citizens. So anyway, that's why I brought this question about. Also on uh number three, continue to work with county and nonprofits to address affordable housing, homelessness prevention and unhoused services. You know, uh we have um the county, we have many unhoused folks that have not getting the services that are, that have been here for a long time. That are not housed, and I was wondering perhaps a letter to the county or whoever um. Um for example, the home key, they're not, our, our home less in our hometown are not getting priority. So I think writing a letter to the county is, hey, you need to start serving our residents that have been here for a long time. Um I think that's what we need, at least give them the heads up that that's what we want. We've been asking for that for quite a while and um. So that's what, what we would do, why I'm asking about number three, probably do that. Uh now page seven. Um that one, uh the smart, this is a number two. Which one is it? Two, oh, number two, the major components of the smart city infrastructure project. Launch of the smart, uh it's, it was a great program and glad for VTA to give us that grant. However, when I, when we had that uh the kickoff, when I found out it wasn't electric. That was, that was something that was um disappointing. So I'm hoping that if we're going to create a fleet in the future, that we go electric. Especially now when we're signing, we signed up for the reach codes, so that, that needs to happen. Um the next one is. Oh, most traffic safety, I think it's on that one as well, yes, that's the three. So on that one, I know the federal government gives out grants to areas that have a lot of congestion. I think they just gave one to San Francisco, so I would like to see some, um what do they call it? When they, they put something on the road and it measures how many cars travel? I, I think uh, I, I think they're called clicks or something with the, the.
A stick chair interim city engineer, uh so we have to tradition go to counters, uh maybe that's what you refer to. But we also have uh more advanced technology that picks up uh uh unique ID from your cell phone as you travel. Center, big data, they collect those uh truck data that the, the city can purchase and utilize for various projects.
And the reason why I asked for that, uh those, uh to monitor how many people come off of uh eight eighty, no, not eighty, six eighty. Is because we can probably get some federal grants, uh some money to stack. Because I know there's a lot of traffic, you know, people coming from the central valley, going east, uh westbound to the, to the jobs. So I mean, you know, I, I think they, they put something on the road and they count how many, how many uh people travel on the roads. I'm not sure what's called, but we can do that and then um. I will move on because I have other ones, but I, that I don't want to get stuck on this, so just wait. And I'm jumping down. Thank you.
Mayor, can I just advise you?
Oh, thank you, Mayor.
I, I just want to clarify before we move on. One of the recommendations is to, of course, do the presentation. And the other one. And the other one is feedback on prioritization of council referrals. Are you referring to this list that's attached to this one? There are some, yeah, no, not that, not this one, this one, this one, this, how come it's, uh, very few? It's not whole. This is on the actual prioritization that coming to you, the ones that are sort of pending, we're coming to you on February seventh. This is the list of items that were already moved to move forward, but that had the additional funding or resource needs, and so that's what gets discussed as part of the budget. So this is what we're asking as to, we'll have a section on that. Well, uh, is there anything else besides these specific, uh, items? Uh, so again, next week, we will be talking about this other list, right? We haven't discussed the council yet. So, so example being like the team center or any things like that that will be bringing forward. Um, and then if there's any additional things that the council would like us to look at, and we'd, we'd be.
So any additional questions? We can do it tonight.
Uh, I mean, as a council, you can tell us to, so the point of today, tonight's discussion is really to see if there's things you want us to consider incorporating into the proposed budget. So if there's something in the council you want us to look at.
That's what I was looking for, sure, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Good morning. Uh, if you'd like to. Yes, I think City Manager, if you'd like to.
And if we can have the slide deck up, and I'm gonna hand it over to Director Line to cover the next.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, members of the public. It's my pleasure every year to take this off, when I think the council, your leadership and values and helping us succeed in what we do, the executive team and your support and your staff for engaging selection, especially my staff who work tirelessly, make this happen. So in fact, this more, this afternoon or evening, we're going to go through these items at a high level. We're available to answer any questions, um, but to remind you, this is still a fluid process. So we'll start with the budget calendar and kind of illustrate how we engage you, the community staff, in this process in a multifaceted way. We'll summarize the community survey feedback, which council received a full report on January seventeenth, confirm the seven council priority areas. Talk about the economic outlook and what we study and what we think and foresee happening locally. Speaking about the tenure forecast and what that means. And then to talk about reserves, which is a really important hallmark of our fiscal sustainability. Next slide, please.
So this is a high-level summary of our budget calendar and process. Um, so during November and December, we ran the statistically valid community survey by F M three. Um, January seventeenth, council received the full summary by the consultants. Tonight, we're doing the preliminary budget study session. On February twenty eighth, uh, engineering team will bring forward for council consideration the C I P study session. Between March and April, we're going to do what's called the open town hall budget survey. Council may recall is an online tool that allows for the community to engage in addition to the survey that was signed by F M three. We'll have two in-person community engagement in March and April. In April, on the eighteenth, we have an important exercise called the master fee schedule. Every year, we bring forward to council articles to ensure, um, we are reviewing and staying on top of cost recoveries for fee-based revenue. Also, on April eighteenth, we'll bring forward the C I P program fully vetted out and hope council will adopt that evening. We come back to council in a formal setting at the council meeting of May ninth to present the proposed budget. That'll comprise of all funds, primarily the general fund, the enterprise funds and all other funds. Holding that on June sixth, we'll adopt the budget, uh, have fiscal year begins on July first. Next slide, please. So F M three, um, they conduct a survey, it's really important for us to hear from the community, understand what we're doing, what we're doing well, and understand areas of perception where we can improve as a community. So during November and December, we had a dual module survey conducted via telephone and online. We surveyed six hundred members of our community with a confidence of ninety-five percent plus or minus, and noted in four languages as summarized there. Next slide. Because we've done this over multiple years, it's really created positive trends. And so I want to hit on several of them that are really important to us as we look at our budget and our service delivery, and then potentially appropriating additional funds for our paid services. Eighty-nine percent of those polled say that Nopetus is a good place to live, play and work. That's what communities aspire for. Eighty-eight percent are satisfied with overall quality of life in Nopetus. Eighty percent say that they approve of city government overall. And ninety percent say they are proud to live in Nopetus. These are very impressive numbers, considering Nopetus is right here in the Philippine Valley. So I think, you know, we sometimes see this and we see it, we kind of take it for granted, but that perspective makes these numbers even more impressive, to be honest. Other things I want to highlight tonight is trust. You know, transparency and engagement and trust is super important to me. Um, and this, um, leadership team in the council, seventy-six percent of those polled say they trust the city, implying the city's been good. And also seventy-four percent say they trust the way we manage our tax dollars. These are both up from prior years. And that's also remarkable, considering we went through the pandemic. We weathered that and we had economic improvements from that. So kudos to everyone, um, and especially city staff who worked in this area. Next slide. So a fun exercise as a part of the poll, we need to be probably, several of you have probably done some of these polls, is a battery of questions. But a final question that we'd like to ask participant is hypothetically, if you had a hundred dollars to spend on a city budget, what would you spend it on? And we've rattled off the six priority areas. Consistently, what we're seeing is that public safety brings high. So twenty dollars of the hundred dollars is public safety, followed by neighborhood and housing, and then kind of an equal spread of economic development, community wellness, open space, environment, transportation and transit. So that's really good. Um, I want to reemphasize again to focus on public safety, and you'll see that come, number come back reflecting when we look at the appropriation of our city funds. Next slide. So we also, prior council went through, uh, an extensive process to identify what are our key priority areas. The reason why this is important is because in essence, this is kind of the heart of our public policy. What guides us in terms of our tax spending, how would determine services and prioritize what we do? It falls into seven categories, which I'll read off alphabetically. And so tonight, as we open our, um, budget session and delivery, we want to be mindful of what these priority areas are. Community wellness and open space, economic development and job growth, the environment, governance and administration, neighborhood and housing, public safety, transportation and transit. You'll see that reiterated throughout the budget list when you look, um, and we also measure our performance along these areas as well. Next slide. As we look at our economic situation on our local budget, I want to remind us of what happened during the COVID pandemic. This shows, this is a very busy slide, but I want to tell you what it's showing us. During COVID, the general fund, um, caused the general fund to lose about thirty million dollars during twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. This community, council leadership and staff responded very swiftly over a variety of strategies. It was not just one thing that we took out of our pool balance, and it was really impressive. We voters here, uh, approved measure F was timely. It coincided with, um, the pandemic. We defunded some less critical, um, C I P projects. We used the emergency reserve, I mean, the pandemic was, uh, example of why we have these reserves. We creatively looked at available funds and did interfund transfers to help balance the general fund to heat against reducing services significantly. We deferred maintenance, um, that's certainly just a tactical approach, uh, because that's not sustainable. We defunded twenty-three point seven five positions, almost ten of those remain unfunded. We, uh, employees stepped up, we negotiated and accepted concessions, and we had one-time revenues that really helped us during this time. Um, and as Assistant City Manager mentioned, when we came through, uh, the end of the year, any available resource was restored back into our reserves. So that gives us context as we look at our economic forecast and our tenure budget. Next slide, please.
Um, can you go back to that slide again?
Councilmember Ian?
Sorry. Can you tell me the one-time revenue, how much did we get?
It varies across the board, a lot of the key income tax, what we call an indirect tax, that we didn't anticipate as high in other areas as well. So I'll have to get back to you. And ARBA, ARBA was a way we leveraged general fund.
Okay, um, and. I have no clue about recovered revenue, so do you know how much we get from last year on the recovered revenue, on, on, uh, revenues? What, please, recovering revenue?
Can you expand on what you mean by that?
Um, you said that you were working on, um, the recovery revenue. Do you know how much we got last year?
And can I rephrase that question?
Sure.
Um, so if the question pertains to how is our revenue overall recovering?
I think, I, I think my question is about the, the rental fee from, or different recreation, uh,
Oh, uh.
Is that one of the recovery? Or am I all?
Uh, yes, recreation revenues are recovering, because during the pandemic, as many of us recall, shelter in place shut down a lot of our programs because of public safety, and some of those programs are reopening, and there's a huge demand, so that particular category of revenue is certainly recovering. Also, our hotel stays as well. We have a slide that I'll go into, um, with five primary revenue areas, the economic indexes and kind of what we're seeing.
Okay, and last question I have for the last slide. Seventy-six percent and seventy-four percent, although this is under trust from the community members, although it increases over the past year, are we happy with that?
Yes, slide fourteen, you're referring to the last two bullet points?
Yes.
Yes, this is very favorable. This is very favorable, and it's really remarkable during the pandemic, when there was a lot of volatility and chaos, to see continued demonstrated trust is very praiseworthy.
Are you looking to improve that?
We always are, because we're highly tempered.
Of course, that's what I was asking, why you happy with that?
Oh, we don't stay still, we're always endeavoring to make improvement.
Okay, good, thank you. That's all I have, thank you, Leah, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Barbara Deo.
Yes, uh, on that slide, on the thirty million loss.
Yes, slide seventeen.
Right, so if I understand it right, we're saying that, um, twenty twenty is an actual loss, right? So we compared that in twenty nineteen, and then what we had in twenty twenty-two.
Correct, so twenty nineteen, just kind of as a quick snapshot, right? We brought in a hundred fifteen million during that year for the general fund, and as you could see there, in twenty twenty, we only brought in one oh five, in twenty twenty-one, one oh nine. A huge part of that you'll see is the T O T hotel line item, um, and so that just dropped, right? So starting from the bottom, transient occupancy tax, I love government words like that, that's the hotel tax. So it goes from fourteen point five million down to, um, you know, eleven million if the pandemic began in March of twenty twenty, as you may some of you may recall, one sixteen. And then you'll see fourteen point five million drops to four point two million. Shelter replacement, we couldn't travel, people weren't going to stay here for business for the future. So that was a primary area of major loss, and we saw volatility also on the sales tax side as well. You can see some there, sales tax goes from twenty point nine to twenty-five to twenty-five.
Mm-hmm.
Lots of shifts in, um, consumer behaviors and also fear of spending what they think is pretty limited, right? When you go through volatility like that, job losses, we saw sales tax numbers plummet because of that fear.
So in response to that, what we tried to do is, uh, those things.
Yes, yes.
Or is it reflected, uh, on the category summary? Because if I look at it as layman as I am, right, if you look, the only thing that increased or didn't, uh, went down, that go down is the property tax.
Right, so you know, in, in a budget, we have to look at balancing the budget, it's two sides of a ledger. We have revenue and we have expenses, so we have this side here, the variety of, um, strategies. Revenue side is measure F. Uh, interfund transfer removes money from various funds into the general fund to create resources. On the expenditure side, we have defunding positions, which reduces expenses. We have, um, taking employee concessions, which is also reducing expenses, and also deferring maintenance. So we're only looking one side, right? This slide only focuses on the general fund revenue. The other side is expenditures, and what happens is, right, revenue minus expenses equals either a loss or a surplus. Right, and so what you'll see in these years, what we don't summarize necessarily here in this context, is each of these years, we balance the ledger, and any surplus we have, we restore to the reserves.
Let me, I'll, I'll, I'll point it out, so my, my, my question really is, you know, by twenty twenty, right? You know, we had good fiscal strategy, you know, we have all the concessions that you mentioned.
Uh-huh.
Uh, but I want to see, uh, where those efforts are, uh, to that chart.
How they manifest?
Right.
We'll need to actually have you look at the audited financial statements to see the overall results of the general fund. So the purpose of this is to illustrate the budget impact of COVID on the revenue side. Every single agency took a huge revenue hit. In order to see how we balance the budget, we have to look at fully the revenue and expense, which we don't have here. We're happy to bring that back, but I can't answer that question without showing you the expense on the balanced budget.
You may try, all I'm saying is, you know, we were saying, hey, the city has been good, right? And here are the figures, there's another portion that we're going to come back with to explain to you that we didn't put through the last two years. My, my issue is, what I'm seeing is, those were because of property tax, correct me if I'm wrong. Look, uh, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty-one, only property tax never changed.
Correct, no, here, uh, thirty-six percent of our revenue base in the general fund is property tax, and it's, it's a blessing, because it's very stable, and it also reinforces the importance of land use.
Right, so other than those, uh, revenue, uh, strategies that we have on those listed there, what else did we do? So how, okay, is there another amount of everything that we did for strategy special M, different V I P, use research and, and financial, how much would that effort, is that effort, you know, collective effort, manifested in a, you know, in balancing, as you said, balancing a budget?
Yes, we, we have a list, although we don't have it right here. I don't know if we have it in the backup slide, because it was a couple of years ago, uh, in the budget. This was just, I think this was just setting the context, so we have all of those broken down, and we can provide, so for, for example, measure F was about six million, and then six point five ongoing. The convention for about two point four million, I think we did, defunded C I Ps about four something million. So it's all, it's all different, and then we got ARPA sixteen point seven million, uh, to fund some positions. So ARPA funded some community programs, some city-like costs, right? So we can provide that, we, we have that from two, three years ago, we can provide that some. Uh, again, I don't know if we have it in a backup slide, I doubt it, because it's not current, but happy to provide that.
Yeah, maybe it's good later on to come back with that, so maybe we can, uh, you know, uh, propose some policies with regards to maintain those, because it worked, worked during the pandemic, worked during the last three years. You know, it balanced our, our budget, uh, both in expenditures and both in revenues.
But as Director Line mentioned, some things council member worked just for that time, we had to do it, there was no other option. So we, we deferred projects we wanted to do, but we couldn't afford. We deferred maintenance that we should have done, but we deferred it because it was an emergency. So it's not something we would do on a sustained basis, uh, but of course, measure F, again, that's a eight-year strategy. So there's things like that we could do, again, employee concessions, I mean, our employees, you know, work really hard and they poor went, or, I don't know, poor gold arrays, uh, you know, there was zero for many of the employees, not all, but many. So I mean, those are not things we can do on an ongoing basis, but we're happy to bring you the numbers. And then we continue to look for various strategies to increase revenue, I'll talk about that a little bit later.
Right, because really my final question is, you know, those concessions and the funding dispositions to, uh, really say that we're opening up in twenty twenty, twenty-three, we're slowly giving them back. Say that we're opening up in twenty twenty-three, we're slowly giving them back, right? And that's really the gauge, uh, we hold is a bunch of, again, sorry, for, for the way that patch up for. For the impunity that we need, uh, that we did for the last two years, uh, is to give them back and be stable again. So, uh, probably that's what we would like to see, right? Or whatever we did during the last two years to balance, invited both expenditures and then revenues. Is to bring back concessions, that employee concession, we did that before, if you remember. Right, so the start would be even them back, stabilizing, uh, going forward in twenty twenty-three, I think that's, that's the policy.
Yes, all right, we can bring back a discussion and all the concessions just to note, so. They were all negotiated agreements and so they gave up some money, but then the terms were extended or, you know, different terms were agreed to. And then even the positions, you can see the defunded positions, we totally tried to restore some of that.
We are still, you're trying to restore them?
Yes, so we did, we've been doing it and we couldn't afford to do it all at once, so every year we've been trying to bring forward kind of. More critical ones and so you'll see that in the proposed budget as well.
Okay, thank you.
Slide eighteen, please. So let's transition, we're going to just go into the economic big picture before we drill down to the local level. Um, the economy is still uncertain, there's times where it's more stable than others. Uh, at this point, we have tempered optimism, we see local numbers improving. Um, we have a very balanced approach to the budget, certainly always presenting to you the council a balanced budget. But also looking at a holistic way of providing our services and being fiscal stewards. And importantly, is reemphasizing that we do not propose to use any of our city revenue data reserves. Um, the revenues for our city continue to recover from the pandemic, we're not out of the woods, right? This winter, we have what's called a tripledemic, COVID, flu and R S V. So we don't want to take that for granted and how it still influences public behavior and then therefore public revenues. January twenty-third, we hear big headlines about what's happening at the state budget, you know, and what does that mean? A lot of big questions, right? How does that translate to local dollars, local state revenues? So let's try to understand that a little bit and see. Uh, big headlines say California budget is going to experience a twenty-four billion dollar shortfall, that's huge billions. Uh, in context, two-hundred-and-ninety-seven billion dollar budget, that's three point six percent lower than last year. Last year's budget was a record for the, the state of California, a lot of proposals of new services came out of that, that's great, that's fantastic. Um, keeping in mind that the state budget, over sixty percent of the state budget comes from personal income tax. So there's a lot of volatility that's attached to capital gains and attached to the, um, the investment market, right? The stock market. At the end of the day, um, do these big billions of dollars of budget losses in the state budget translate to local programs? Not too much, it generally translates to state programs, state priorities. We may find that there may be less allocation of grants, uh, for us to compete for. But when we look at our primary revenue areas, which all help us gain a better understanding of. We don't see having a core, a direct correlation of these big numbers to our city revenues. Now let's shift the discussion to another important metric that we keep a close eye on, which is unemployment and employment here within the city. Big headlines again, you know, tech sector being in the Silicon Valley, how do you not see it? Tech sector, big layoffs, right? So we worry that's going to have a direct impact. Um, if these big numbers coming from these big employers still represent a small segment of the overall employable laborers. In our state and within the Silicon Valley. And how do we measure that? We look at E D D, the, and we look at the bureau's unemployment measure specifically for the city of Malpitas. And in December, the published, uh, number just came out, we're at two point two percent unemployment. That's really impressive considering pre-pandemic, we're at two point six. So the headlines are, uh, worrisome, but we don't see it really causing big volatility within our unemployment here. It doesn't mean that we shouldn't ease our economic development effort, that remains a priority for us. Um, but I want to put the context of those headlines into what it means here for the city of Malpitas workforce. Now let's talk about another measure that we monitor, inflation, right? Inflation went through an inflection point, meaning that it hit a high and now it's coming down, right? So in December, we have all, uh, all items at six point five percent, core C P I is at five point seven. Reserve, the Federal Reserve really wants to do that at two percent, so we're still ways from what they see as a, a stable inflation rate. New crisis have come down, that's wonderful, labor shortage still remains and supply chain remains a challenge. Um, housing market, um, is soft, right? Because interest rates tomorrow is just so high right now. So Federal Reserve, um, has two main policies, unemployment and inflation, that's their true primary purpose. They'd like to see inflation come down to about two percent, so they will continue to engineer rate increases. It will be the eighth one, which is scheduled to come, come out pretty soon. Uh, with that said, you know, a lot of economists foresee, uh, a slowing economy in twenty twenty-three. But they do not foresee a steep, deep, long-protracting recession. And I think that's important because that's also not assumed in our budget. We've heard a lot of different experts from Moody's, B of A, the Fed, common theme, that's the common theme. Um, the war in Ukraine still remains a big global problem, right? So we don't want to be, uh, recite that. Um, last but not least, we commit to you that we are following and monitoring these important headlines, these important measures. Staying disciplined and through the quarterly updates, we present to you quarterly updates on our financial position, we'll keep you informed. Next slide. So when we look at this policy of fiscal sustainability, I feel that there's four corners that frame it. One is economic outlook, which we just talked about, right? A balanced budget, really important, when we talk about referrals and service enhancements, how we pay for it on an ongoing basis. Fiscal policies and reserves and long-term planning. Next slide. So now let's jump into the meat and the heart of what we're looking at tonight. This is just the general fund, it's about a hundred and twenty, twenty-six million dollars of over a two-hundred-million-dollar budget when we look at C I P and all other funds. So in the adopted budget for the current year, we're balanced at about a hundred and seventeen point six million. Uh, in the foreseeable next five years, we have a modest annual surplus, you'll see there. So about one million dollars in the next year of surplus. And then, uh, consistent with the prior tenure forecast in the published budget book, we anticipate a deficit when measure F expires. It reiterates the importance of fiscal discipline, um, innovation and economic development and land use policy. Next slide.
I have a, I have a quick question, so can you explain why we are doing a ten-year forecast? Instead of a five-year or is that, is that common?
It's actually not common, but it's a best practice. Um, we like to look at long-term planning like this so we can make long-term decisions. Many budgets are only on a one-year cycle or a two-year cycle. And it's really good in governing to look at five to ten-year horizon, because as you are familiar, many projects take multiple years. Right, and so a best practice is actually to have a tenure forecast to kind of see what's going to happen in those five years. Thank you. Um, yeah, part of why we moved to that, we just moved to that about ten years ago, part of it was also to capture pension obligations. So as we were looking at actual studies, we could incorporate that into the forecast. Thank you. Yeah. Vice Mayor, can you make?
Lauren, can you please go back to page twenty? I just want to absorb it a little bit more because it was really fast and I got, I was just like on the first, the top part of it, yeah. So can you, in one or two sentences, can you just summarize what, what's the takeaway from this slide, real quick?
Yes, so the takeaway from this slide here is that we have annual surpluses in the upcoming five years. They're nominal surpluses, so we still need to be financially very disciplined about service enhancements. And also very disciplined about cost management. The other takeaway is when neither that expires, we have a deficit. So today and every day, we need to focus on economic development, innovation and the way we provide our city services. Regional partnerships and also managing our costs.
Okay, got it.
Of course, now you've committed it to memory, right?
Ask me.
No, I will, I'm going to ask you tomorrow.
I, I just wanted to make sure I understood, you know, the takeaway, what is it that you wanted us to know? Again.
Now I know, excellent, of course. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Great, so I would like to give those studying our budget an understanding of what makes up our revenue. Two-thirds of our revenue comes from property tax and sales tax. Understanding that is important, because understanding that through the economic lens is important. Some of them are mentioned out, we have licenses and fees, T O T and a potpourri of other things. Okay, so that's really the takeaway here is to understand where our concentration is. And it's very important that we have diversity of revenues. Okay, next slide. This slide, the purpose of this slide is to illustrate where do we spend our money. Visit online with council priority and community feedback, yes. Uh, number one budget appropriation for the general fund is police, followed by fire. How it works and other direct services, building, recreation. Right, so the purpose of this is really to illustrate our focus of spending taxpayer dollars and ensuring that it reflects those surveys. That we, that we call revenue. Okay, um, next slide, I think I have a better version of that, so let's skip this one and go to the next one. Let's talk about revenue methodology and then we'll talk about reserves. So revenue tech, uh, methodology, that slide illustrated some of the top revenue sources. Let's talk about how it's locally controlled, who administers it and what we look at when we develop our budget and why. Okay, so property tax, our number one revenue source is thirty-six percent. Many people think when they write the check to the county, one hundred percent of that comes to the state. We don't get a hundred percent of that check, it's submitted to the county, we only get sixteen point two percent. The other eighty-four percent goes to other important public agencies like the state and the schools. Those all render important value city, uh, government services, but the city gets sixteen point two percent of that property tax. Excess E-RAT, excess E-RAT is really important. It's about two to three million dollars of our general fund budget, it's still mired in litigation. So in our quarterly reports and readings with the county, we still hold back thirty percent. So conservatively, we're not putting that in the budget and it's not available for city appropriation.
Can you, uh, can you, um, remind me again what E-RAT is?
That's what. Uh, education revenue augmentation fund.
Good.
Thank you. And in counties where property tax is high, the amount that's allocated to schools from the state, there's still a residual balance. That residual balance is allocated back to the county and the states. The schools and the county and cities are deceived as to that formula. And so we're holding back thirty percent of the litigation time.
Do you have an idea when that litigation will end?
No, it, it just, uh, there was, um, I'll, I'll let the city attorney speak on this because he's more of an expert. Yeah, that's all I'm saying.
Uh, so I'm happy to brief anyone on the council about this, um, I'm not sure it'll be the best use of our time today. Uh, it was in October of last year, decided at the trial court level, it's now on appeal to the court of appeal. I would expect that process to take between a year and two years. After which it may also be appealed to the California Supreme Court, which could take another year.
Okay, thank you very much, I, I do recall when the redevelopment agency, I know, I do recall the city, this, the school districts did receive a, a huge. Proportion of that, so I, I can understand why it's going to take a long time as well, right, thank you.
No problem, and we appreciate our county partners, they, they brief us every quarter and that's how we develop our budget. Is being very informed with them on a quarterly basis. Moving on to sales tax, it's administered by the state. We use H T L, who is a California expert, they administer over ninety percent of sales tax in the state of California for municipalities. Um, they also conduct our revenue audits and they brief us quarterly. Measure F is a quarter cent, importantly for us to know is that one hundred percent of measure F comes to the city. So there's no cost sharing, unlike the other allocation from the state. We're seeing that this is recovering, people are really happy to dine out. Uh, we're seeing improvements in B and B and the online shopping is actually providing more revenues to us locally as well. So we're seeing favorable trends in our sales tax. T O T, um, that's our hotel tax, it's administered by the city, our rate is fourteen percent. We also use H T L to do revenue compliance. We monitor this monthly because the hotel operators report to us monthly. In the first four months, July through October, is that right? Yeah, first four months, we have seen eighty percent improvement over last year. That's really strong improvements, uh, we don't know exactly what that's really due to, maybe the Niners are doing well and people came, the state of Malpitas. Um, to be conservative, we're not projecting eighty percent for the balance of the year, that wouldn't be sound. However, we are continuing to show improvements in this area and we're hopeful that in twenty-three, twenty-four's budget. Will be at about seventy-five percent of pre-pandemic level. Charges for service, so charges for services are right, it includes recreation, utilities. Um, it includes permits and license, the areas receiving improvement is recreation, right? Opening the program, coming back, charging for swimming and classes, the area we anticipate some softening is in areas of perm. You know, um, uh, some softening maybe in building permits and plan review. So we'll continue to monitor that and we'll have a, a more in-depth, uh, uh, in-depth discussion at mid-year in a couple of weeks. Yeah.
Vice Mayor?
Lauren, before we leave, uh, page twenty-four, is on the, uh, sales back, tax, is that the? Formula driven or is it, uh, uh, hard, hard dollar percentage wise?
Uh, do you mean the allocation to us or?
Yes, ask me.
Oh, the allocation to us is prescribed by law.
Oh, okay, so it says like, for, like, if we expect that to be every year, which is. Or is it formula driven every year?
Uh, okay, so then it's formula driven, so if somebody pays a dollar in sales tax, right? Then there's a portion of that comes, that comes to the state.
So does the portion change every year or it's the same?
Uh, the portion is based on the, the rules of the allocation, so like nine point three seven five is our most, it is tax rate. We'll get, other nine point three seven five, we'll get one point two five. Because one percent from the state portion and a quarter percent from measure F.
Oh, okay, so, but the one point two five, that, that does not change?
Correct, uh, not unless the voters here change it. So when measure F expires, it'll drop back to one percent and we won't receive about seven million dollars of revenue.
Got it, okay.
Can I expand on, can I, uh, jump on that? Um, so that means that when our measure F expires. We, uh, other cities, I think I, I, from my understanding, other cities can raise their sales tax. And we won't be able to because only certain cities and so many cities in this, in a county can raise their tax, right? There's, there's some type of a law in this.
There is a law, uh, it's a point of contention, uh, because sales tax is administered by the state. The sales tax, the state legislates that locally, counties and cities can only raise up to two percent above the state rate. We are at that cap and the city voters grab that last quarter cent. Once measure F expires. It, it's, it's a little bit of a guess what's going to happen with that quarter cent. Locally here is in our best interest to grab that last quarter percent because it's a legislative cap. And one hundred percent of that revenue comes to the state.
Yes, I was thinking about that, so it would be wholess to try to keep it, but you know, that's still a while away, like five, six years, so. And my, I just wanted to make everyone aware that if we don't use it, we lose it, so.
Twenty twenty-eight, um, is the last year that we were really looking at planning, that we have to go before the voters. Um, always that's not going until the last minute.
Thank you.
But important points to always under. But important points to always understand, local government revenue is very minimalized and the local tax measure is a critical component of what we can control.
Great.
All right, I'll finish off on the general fund reserve and then I'll hand it back over to Mr. Assistant to the manager. General fund reserves, major takeaways, this is a four-year schedule or five-year schedule that come from our audited financial statement. I want to show the stability of our reserves, so we'll see in the unassigned, we have forty million dollars and that hasn't fluctuated with the pandemic. In addition, we have the committed areas for curves, technology, facilities. We have about thirty million dollars in a section one fifteen trust, and also with surplus as we continue to contribute more into the first stabilization reserve, now at an additional five million dollars. So collectively, when we look at this schedule, plus our one fifteen trust, we have about eighty-five million dollars in a variety of different reserves. The two predominant ones are the general fund and budget stabilization, which is about thirty-seven million dollars to the right there, right above that yellow arrow. So major takeaway is our reserves are strong, we continue to lean in them when we have a pandemic, but otherwise they sit there and they continue to accumulate such that when we do meet them, we can rely on them and they enable us to have a consistent level of service delivery. That's it, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, I, I have a question.
Actually, I don't know if I have a question, but can we go back to a slide thirty-one, please? Maybe I'll remember. Oh, that's thirty-one. Right, so, uh, the yellow one, property tax and sales tax, well, obviously they're the, the top two revenue getter. Is that standard?
There's really no, I mean, any agency, like some agencies, utility users tax, which we don't have, lots of municipalities have it and it runs about ten percent. So it varies. The city of Milquetais, we're fortunate, our allocation of property tax is fifteen point two percent. That was instituted when Prop thirteen was voted by the voters. Some agencies, that allocation is only seven percent. So the mix varies.
All right, I'll, I'll refer to you.
Okay.
On, on the textbook or on the revenue, right? What's I D, what is an ideal revenue source or a demographic or a city or, or an entity? Is it always sales tax and property tax, what's, what's ideal? I understand that we do have different, you know, percentages on sales tax is controlled by the city and as less as we can control it, I mean, by the state and, uh, we less have a safety. Uh, property tax as well has differences between, uh, other entities or jurisdictions. Uh, is the general idea, ideal revenue source for a city or for a state? Is it ideal that the best tool is property tax and sales tax or is this what happened that that's our, that's revenue getter in the city?
I'll explain it from a macroeconomic perspective. The ideal is to have diversity of revenue. So thirty-six percent for property tax and twenty-nine percent for property tax is still a very good mix. We don't want to be like, it's being necessarily where over sixty percent is personal income tax. With that said, we can also improve in areas like business license tax. Our business license taxes, plus or minus three hundred thousand for economy and the number of businesses we have here, that's far and nearly low. We, and another aspect from a macroeconomic principle perspective is what are the economic indexes underlying matters for these revenues, right? So in property tax, land use, residential, industrial use. On the sales tax side, we want to make sure that we have a diversity of economics, so we have a pretty good diversity of sales tax base, meaning we have a good proportion of B to B, business to business, technology, dining and allocation from the pool, so that's very good. We continue to stay on top of our fees, some jurisdiction get a little relaxed, and so what happens is we have to have big catch-up. What we've been very good about now is staying on top of our fees. Council last year actually are saying, we want to actually start phasing in better cost recovery for, uh, some of our programs. That's the best practice. T O T, we continue to work with the community on building more hotels. What's in this number is two hotels, Element and Spring Hill, we also anticipate more in the pipeline. So we want two things, diversity and looking at the economic diversity of our community in terms of urban planning.
Are we diverse enough, you think?
It varies, right, and it correlates.
That's what we are, uh, talking about. Are, are we diverse enough or, uh, you really think with the, and the laws of Measure F, twenty twenty-eight, in the present city? I just feel something like that. Do we have a vision, uh, of the diversity of the revenue, uh, sources that we have, considering the contingencies of Measure F being gone? Uh, the fact that property tax and sales tax, we only have a certain control of that because it's controlled by the state? So, and the most control that we have are, are the lesser percentages around this protection.
I think this is a wonderful conversation, and I think it has to be looked at in the lens of what taxpayers would approve. What I've seen missing here is really a better balance for business license. We don't have U U T, it's actually very unfavorable. You know, it's very hard to get that across, but it doesn't mean it's important. And most, a lot of jurisdictions, U U T, both residential and commercial utilities, user stocks makes up almost ten percent. Uh, that's a hard threshold, um, and it may not be one what we have here. We also have enterprise funds that have various fee updates, right? That's another component of our fiscal sustainability. So when we talk about best practice and what we need to do, this discussion tonight is on the general fund. A big discussion is also about our utility funds, namely water, stormwater and wastewater. Right?
Right, so of course, and, and, and I think that we're looking at this.
Yes, we are.
I think there's one more question I have on the next slide or the, the slide after the next, please. This one. My memory still some stirred me well. So these are the budget allocations.
Right, for the general fund only.
For the general, uh, you know, you know, police is way up there. And fire, and then we have, uh, the grabs, right? So my question is, on this budget allocation, how much percentage of these are, uh, or on, for salaries and benefits and how much of each goes back into the community? As a service, uh, you know, as, as the fund going down to services? Shall I use the?
Operational.
Right, so yeah, operational, uh, you know, percentages of of, but despite the allocations.
So, I mean, I can answer your question, if I get it correctly, um, council member of the year, so uh, over three quarters of our budget is personnel, right, related to personnel? And in terms of services, I mean, all of the staff is here to provide services. So if I look at it that way, everything we do is either services or it's infrastructure, right? That's what we invested.
All right, let's talk about infrastructure, that's a little bit objective about, uh, the percentages of budget allocation. Well, how much of those, may, yes, I'll guess to me, if I may, you know, percentage of those budget allocations are for operational, uh, costs?
Since this is, again, we're just looking at general fund allocation, it's pretty much, uh, if you mean operations as in, because we provide services and programs, right? We could be providing some programs, so I mean, if you, if all of that is looked at under a product lens of services, all of it goes towards funding that. We're not looking at the C I P budget here at all.
All right, I'll simplify it, so police, uh, let's say that's thirty-seven million, right? How much is that goes to, uh, operation, to, to the salaries, the benefits of the police? I just want to find out how much we are spending on each of those departments on budget allocations. Basically fifty percent of that goes to, uh, make sure that our political fine and that goes to uh, figures down to the community that this is what I'm trying to list.
Uh, sure, so this is, uh, this is the adopted budget book, um, for this year. And what we have is we have it broken down in terms of salaries, permanent and temporary salaries, let's say for police, but then there's a lot, um, you know, things that are associated, benefits and stuff that are associated, right, with that. Uh, so if I look at personnel services, uh, in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three adopted, it says it's thirty-five point seven million, if that's what you're asking, and then supplies and contractual services. There was a remaining, there's some doing, um, and some capital outlay, like vehicles and all of that. So if you're asking what the personnel costs are, uh, with that thirty-seven point nine billion, it's about thirty-five point seven million uh, in the twenty-three, twenty-three adopted budget related to just staffing. And then again, that staffing is just to provide services.
In terms of percentages, are the, uh, you know, somehow we're seeing the other departments?
Uh, we can look at, is there a particular department you want us to look at? Because we have all of the personnel costs broken out in the budget. We also have it broken out by function, so types of programs provided. Uh, so is there, is there a department you'd like to look at?
I'm just trying to, uh, find out how much of, uh, budget allocation is the personnel and how much is a commander else? Because if you look at the imaginary hundred dollars and sixteen dollars, it's then a big save. So is that, would that reflect, uh, this budget allocation?
Yeah, I mean, some departments, there may be a little bit going towards equipment and supplies, like if I look at public works, there's probably a large portion of the budget that's going into supplies and equipment, so the proportion may not be exactly the same. Uh, but roughly, I think it would be, uh, most of it is going towards personnel in the general fund again, like that's what we're looking at here and we're not looking at this.
So, uh, you know, the imaginary hundred dollars, so it says when we put one month, you know, it is reflects that any portion of, probably spent a hundred dollar deal on, let's say, uh, neighborhood housing, the presentation that includes, um, personnel costs. Right, that, that, that hundred dollar.
Right, and, and I mean, again, we're looking at priority areas. So if you look at, um, you know, if you look at public safety, yes, there's the direct cost and there's also other ways they support the other priorities. Right, so, um, it's not exactly that whole. I don't want you to think, oh, it should only be twenty percent of our budget should go to that, right? That's not how it would work.
Yeah, I think it, it's a representation of how.
Yeah, I think it, it was just, if you had a hundred dollars, how would you invest? And it basically gives us some insight onto the community's priorities. And everything's important, so people put a little bit everywhere. Uh, but something that's the most important kind of rises to the top in terms of how we should invest our dollars.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, council member.
Now, you have questions on the, the, those.
Are you still? Council member, yeah. Council member then?
Um, so I, on the reserve.
Okay, let's get to that slide first, um, that is slide number twenty-five.
So we have, um, is that a total of eighty, right?
Because it's the forty million there, the six million above and the fifteen million remaining, plus we have thirty million and then our fifteen trust.
And in that, that they went from, uh, state?
Uh, what, the, the reserve?
The reserve.
No, those are locally guard, so the city did and then I was supposed to be coming, but it's the whole size of reserve from us and so things like starting to derive that insurance or contingency and that utilization with the right size. They adopted that policy, in addition to other policies that are locally bound, and it's not my intention to.
Uh, the other question I have is, I know that we have property tax, sales tax, hotel and charges for service there. How conservative were you when you do this forecast of the ten years on revenue and the expenditures?
Uh, I would say it's fairly conservative, so to give you an example, property tax has a forecast of a four percent increase. We already know that Prop thirteen, um, provides for CPI of two percent, so the four percent is pretty modest here, that's a little bit low. So it doesn't really show anticipated major new development, but at the same time, it also doesn't encapsulate, uh, demo revisions, which we hope are just temporary. So to illustrate that, you know, property tax at four percent is, you know, fairly conservative.
And how do you think that we can expect death and force?
Oh, we don't have a deficit now.
No, not now, but would your forecast down with the, the, you know, in ten years?
I think several things, uh, continuing to look and innovate the way we provide services and regional partnerships. Uh, looking at economic development and land use, and at some point revisiting Measure F, it's very integral. Uh, and so I, I think we need to continue to understand how it contributes towards our revenue, how we rely on it, and what it means if we let it expire.
And much of that expires in two years?
No, in twenty twenty-nine. But, uh, all general tax measures need to go to the community on a general election. To, council member. Thank you, council, uh, council, Vice Mayor.
When it's green.
It's green?
When it's green.
There you go.
You know, this is my favorite slide, the reserve.
Slide, I'm not, it's very, very.
Sure, slide is my favorite, I know you got this.
Okay, we included for you.
I know. The reserves, how long would it last?
Well, my hope is that we don't lose most of it. The purpose of reserve is for an event that calls for use, so the pandemic is a good example. There are other areas that we will use, so in the committed, over there to the left, um, you know, the technology facility, artificial turf, we're stating for projects. So that category will be appropriated, and when we bring back the C I P proposed budget, we'll talk about some of the plans, because that area is really funding for anticipated projects. First, we're still sitting on, right, there's some volatility. This budget does not anticipate dispersing funds from this balance sheet or our one fifteen trust.
So all of that is untouchable until there, there is a major disaster or something?
Uh, not the pension, the pension really was designed to return, uh, a better investment over five to ten years, and also it was designed at some point for us to draw from it to stabilize our budget. Because as you may recall, twenty forty is kind of when our pension cost declines and stabilizes pretty significantly. So between now and twenty forty, at some point, the, the idea is to take funds from that reserve to balance our budget and continue to maintain a high level of service. Right, so the idea is not to leave it here. Right, but right now and not next year, we're not making any of those recommendations.
The reason is just one of my favorite slides is, when we went to California League of Students, there was a city there that for some reason, well, we all made this. They woke up one morning and they found they have eighty thousand dollars on their reserve.
Oh, I think I know that one too.
And I don't want to be that too.
Oh, yes, that's why important to me, these numbers come out of our audited financial statements. Like you could tie each one of these numbers back to our audited financial statements.
So what they did, they left everybody, including the manager, everybody, because they didn't have any, have eighty thousand dollars. Anyway, I just wanted to share that one too.
Always. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, yes, I think we're done with questions from the council, so he, my question is, are there any questions? Um, yes, I think we're done with questions from the council, so he'd like us to raise some presentations.
This wonderful.
And we're moving into, where you going? Yes, so we're moving into the next section, just want to make sure we are ready to move on. I don't know, council wants to, we can move on to the next section. Okay, because so if we could go slide twenty six. So we've already had some of these discussions, we started talking about some of this, what could we do? Looking at potential investment needs. So it's premature today to discuss specific budget proposals. We're not ready to do that yet, but we've had many preliminary discussions with the department heads. And we're starting to see some areas that will require special attention during a budget development. And so, again, as you know, our mission really is to provide services, high quality services and programs to the community. And to do that, we, we really need qualified, highly qualified and adequate staff. And many employers in the region, you know, I'm sure you're hearing it's very, very difficult to attract qualified staff. So many employers in the region, including other cities in the region. We are really grappling with recruitment and retention challenges. And so we continue, we have to monitor the market, make sure we're being competitive in terms of compensation, as well as in terms of everything else we offer to make it a great workplace. And we, we've been kind of trying to do that, and you will see some of that come to you in the budget. As we look at positions, look at compensation to make sure we're being competitive. Uh, we also have to correct, so we develop and influence strategies for succession planning. And we've been doing some of that over the past few years. We've been promoting things like oversight positions that allow us to have smoother transitions for key positions. We hope for continued professional development through mentoring programs, through LinkedIn learning. We've established cross-training opportunities. We've required begun more job documentation, but there's still a lot more to do in terms of succession planning. We also look for opportunities for organizational efficiencies, especially when there are, when there are senior staff level vacancies. And so we emphasized on incorporating some of these efficiencies in the proposed budget based on some organizational studies that are underway. And then the next area, so of course, having adequate qualified staff. We need to make sure that they have the right tools, equipment, technology. And so on the fleet side, although we have a replacement fund for fleet, it has historically been hopefully adequate, inadequate. Uh, and so there's many funding needs across the city, including the public works fleet, fire fleet, and several other departments. And so we're trying to rectify this, understanding that we can't solve the problem in one year. But trying to kind of fund some of the fleet and then develop a longer term strategy. So you'll see this as a big area of investment coming to you in the, in the proposed budget. Uh, technology, as I discussed earlier, we're modernizing several technology systems. We've never had a HRIS system, a financial management system, but now I think twenty seven years old. Um, and, you know, again, we cannot do our business without having a good technology in place. Cybersecurity continues to be a threat, and that can actually result in big financial implications. And so that's a key area of investment for us. And then also continuing to improve our online services, because that is how a lot of people access services and find out about our services. So we have to continue to improve that in terms of whether it's permitting or disinformation that they need. Um, and so that's again, an area that we see a potential investment in. Infrastructure, that's something that we, we own a lot of assets. And, you know, pipeline infrastructure, that all of these assets need maintenance and replacement on an ongoing basis. And some of the utilities have dedicated revenues. But a significant portion of our infrastructure that is parks, trees, trees, city facilities do not even storm water, we talked about it a little bit, that's a utility, but does not have a dedicated funds spring. Um, and then again, to continue the conversation that we might have made about economic resilience and growth. Again, for us to be able to not only continue to provide the services we do, but to enhance them. And we always see the need for services and programs growing. We have to continue to foster economic growth and resilience. And so areas of focus towards this in the next year's budget, obviously revitalization of specific areas. You know, that we have planning underway, but also implementation of the specific plan that we are going to be adopting soon. Uh, looking for opportunities to increase and diversify revenues. So Director Li talked about it all before, from modern infrastructure, looking at funding options for that. Modernizing our business stacks, again, we, we actually recently, at the last election, we had three cities in the county very successfully forward with an increase of their business stack. And that's, again, is a big, right now is price value. So it could be one to look for in terms of opportunities. And then facilitating business expansion and retention and increasing our G D P taxes. And, and they bring in jobs when that comes a lot of spending in, in the city. Uh, we'll continue to look to incentivize affordable housing options and to, we have partnered with education institutions, businesses, nonprofits, and workforce development. So we kind of, we have a talented workforce that has access to jobs, that has access to housing within the city, that they spend in the city. And so these are all, I mean, it's all connected, and these are things, again, you'll see in the budget where we are bringing forward investments in certain areas that support this. And it's not a one year strategy, so you'll see something in twenty three, twenty four, but we will continue to build on it. Uh, and we'll talk about that more when we bring the budgets forward. Um, so we're going to move next into the council for follow sections. I don't know if there were any questions on the, on the previous slide. Okay. So we can have the next slide. I'll spend a little bit of time on this. Uh, so on January tenth, you approved the council prioritization policy. Our next council prioritization will be next Tuesday, on February seventh. Um, but today what we're talking about is really fully approved policies, items that were already prioritized to move forward. But that need additional funding or resources or be brought forward to be during the budget discussion. So that you can look at them in the context of other needs and priorities. And so as we kick off the twenty three, twenty four budget, we would really like your input as to whether some of these items we're going to talk about should be considered for incorporation or if you would rather just take them off or defer them. And that's some of the direction we'll be looking for. Now, when Director Li showed you the forecast, the tenure forecast, you saw that we have about one point five million dollars in funding available for next year, which means keeping our services and then any enhanced services, that's what we have available to us in ongoing funding. Um, and you also, as I just talked about, the major investment area. So as city management has said, I mean, keeping in mind and by nothing for. We just want to make sure we're trying to plan with the needs we see out there and then how much money there may be available, so that you can provide us direction on, on these priorities. So we have, uh, we have a write-up on each one of these. So this was just a summary, and I'll just go through the details if we could go. These were all, you can see these were approved at, at one of the quarterly prioritization discussions. Then if we could go to the next slide, please. These were a couple that were, one was tangentially talked about in the prioritization process, the first one. And then the second one was something that came up on January tenth, when you approved the council prioritization policy. Uh, next slide. So this is the same hall address on Building Casar, and we have provided some costs for this. This was brought forward by Mayor Montano, and it said this may not be a priority anymore, but we just kept it on. In case there was a need to discuss this, and if not, we can take direction back. This is to put the, uh, street address on the building to start. It would require design and installation of the four fifty five discounters for our under where it says Monpitas City Hall. And we estimate about fifty thousand dollars for that. That would include the design, some placement options, and then money for the fabrication and installation. Um, next slide. This is a solar future solar panels. So again, this was just a development plan for this. We had, when we entered into agreement with NG for the Esco program. They had basically evaluated and given us costs for solar panels at several city facilities. We moved forward with the one with the best ROI, which was here in the senior center, community center. But again, we do have costs, it would be, it would range, so there's a cost for the plan itself. Council wanted us to move forward with that. And that's about a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars for a consulting contract and about twenty two thousand dollars for staff cost to manage that work. If, if the plan was completed and we wanted to move forward with the panels themselves, NG had given us a cost anywhere from four point five to six point four million, counting the rebates. We got all the rebate, the rebate keep changing. So it would be six point four million minus the rebates, and we would likely be looking for grant opportunities to do this, or we'd have to finance.
I'd like a question on that one. So if, if we do move forward with this, what would be the cost savings? Because that's the whole purpose is to save on electricity. So won't that be savings?
Yes, and I'll, I'll see question has the information. We do have some of that analysis in the agenda packet.
Good evening, Mayor. Um, the savings there in your packet have been estimated per site. So the public works, IT, the police compound would yield an annual savings of about a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. The, if we continue with phase two at City Hall, there will be an estimated savings of a hundred and three thousand dollars. And lastly, if we continue with some minor upgrades to the sports center, those savings are about just under forty seven thousand dollars.
Great thinking, and plus we, we're also eligible to get grants from the federal government. There's these programs for to help these costs.
For grants that we would, we would pursue, and there would be a thirty percent rebate through the investment tax credits as part of the Inflation Reduction Act as well.
Great, thank you.
Next. And this is a fund for real estate acquisitions. Uh, it's a strategic property acquisition revenue fund, SPY for short. And basically, the objective of this is to fund either buying or leasing of property to foster economic development. And we could put aside mining and seed funding, ongoing funding. So this is something we just put in terms of considerations, you know, about the cost of an acre of land. So unfortunately, we live in a very high cost area, so it is difficult to acquire land and we have to save for quite a few years. One of the ideas that I wanted to put forward for council consideration is, again, we do have a policy in place for how we allocate surplus revenue, right? So at the end, what we close out every year, every fiscal year, we have a policy which allocates the surplus to the reserve and then to other priority areas. And so if this was one of the priority areas that the council would like to put in there, we could bring that forward when we modify the policy and bring that forward for council.
So, um, on that is, you know, the innovation center is, we, have we bought that land yet? Or would that be part of that?
The innovation district.
Yeah.
Uh, we do not own land, so at this point, we're just planning for it. And we're hoping what we could also do is, I talked about what's the medical plan that doctor, we would be doing, updating the infrastructure plan and the impact fees. So we're hoping through the impact fees, we can, we can also build enough infrastructure that will help, but we do not own that.
So, um, but isn't that the plan? Because if, if we have that innovation district, it's it will bring in so many, so much revenue, so many businesses want to come to Monpitas that want to have a that innovation district to build their businesses there. Uh, and I'm talking about high tech buildings, businesses. So it seems like to me that that would be a good investment. So, did you want to say anything, Alex, on that?
I would, thank you. Yes, so the innovation district, just a little bit of background, is approximately seventy five acres around the transit center part of the Monpitas Metro Pacific Plan that you will review, consider, and hopefully adopt next week. If at full build up, that seventy five acres moves from a like industrial kind of old tired job area to a more bustling job center and with office and R and D, we could see upwards of four million square feet of new space. The majority of the commercial space that we have in the city is over thirty years old. So when it comes to property taxes, you will see that burn over and obviously see a pretty significant increase for revenues for the city. Also jobs. So at full build up, if it was to happen, we could be looking at upwards of ten, twelve thousand new jobs, quality jobs. Um, and as our assistant city manager just indicated, it's true, the city at this point does not own any land in that general area. But this proposal is meant to hopefully put dollars into this fund and allow the city to be an entrepreneurial, let's say, driver seat. To be able to assemble land to help developers to make sure development happens, and assembly of land is one of the more difficult things to do. And then the other thing that I would recommend is that once we purchase land, that we retain that land and ground lease it out for long-term revenues, five-year ground lease. Green and program.
Yeah, it's a, it's a multiplier effect, if you will. Yeah, thank you very much for that.
Moving on to So this is the thing with vacant land next to the library, as the council will be aware. We tried several times to approach the property owner. Uh, actually initially to purchase the land and couldn't reach agreement on the terms. And then the council direction was to look at a lease. Uh, we haven't been successful, just wanted to point out that if the property, we could try again. If this is something the council would like us to continue to pursue, if we were to buy the land, uh, we would need to maintain it, and it's about eight to ten thousand dollars if it was vacant and available. Uh, so I just wanted to note that there is some funding, there was talk about acquiring it for the open space park at the theater, there've been discussions. Uh, there is some funding available in the Midtown Park Fund for acquisition. Uh, but again, we, we weren't able to reach agreement with the property owner. I'm not sure that the property owner would be willing to sell accordingly. Um, next slide, please. This is a memorial fund for the scale border that unfortunately comes to waste. We have not contacted the family of the scale border. We, we understand that the family has already installed a memorial bench on private property. This request was for a plan, so we noted the cost. Total cost estimated at about ten thousand, that includes staffing costs to kind of coordinate um, the design and the fabrication and installation and about four thousand four, for the actual design and installation. Um, since the family has already installed a memorial bench, and we have not talked to them about the plan, uh, that could be still an option, and it's not a significant amount of money if we could incorporate it into the budget. Uh, but there may be other things like doing an event dedicated to the person. So depending on what council wants, we can move forward. Um, next slide. Vision Zero Plan, so this was something that was prioritized. We just wanted to make sure we shared some information on both the cost of the plan and then also other efforts we have underway that support the same objectives without that additional funding needed. Uh, so Vision Zero is really the sustained systematic and data-driven program. And the intent is to basically reduce fatalities and injuries to zero. And that's why Vision Zero. The first step of the, of the program would be to develop a plan. And so the estimate we had, and which we had shared before with council, was five hundred and fifty thousand one time to develop the plan. And then funded position and about two hundred and fifty thousand and now goes actually go up depending on the uh personal cost of increases, but that will be about two hundred and fifty thousand on an ongoing basis. It does not include costs for implementing any of the projects that may be recommended in the plan. So it is a pretty expensive um program. And uh it's, it's resource intensive. It's not a one-time effort. There are cities uh adjacent to us, both Taroze and Iman, that have uh Vision Zero in place that hasn't shown a clear, hasn't demonstrated clearly that it's effective. Uh we have data and Chief Hernandez has a few who are interested. We do have data um in terms of accidents that does not really support the need for uh this large an effort. We also wanted to to share that we are actually doing more funded by the, funded by the TA, the Level Measurable Grant, uh where we focus on outreach related to bicycle and pedestrian safety. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we've also started the traffic safety assessment and the citywide monitoring study. So we feel like all of those efforts support the objectives. And this may be one that's um, you know, again, it's a big price tag, so something that we may want um to reconsider. Next one. The Saturday senior center hours, it was something the council voted on and started as a pilot. Um as you know, it was quite successful. So initially, the pilot was supposed to run from through November, uh part of November and uh because it was successful, it extended through June of twenty twenty-three. If we wanted to keep this open, the nine AM to twelve noon hours on Saturday on an ongoing basis, we estimate about twenty-four thousand um dollars associated with that. And that's something that we would include in your most budget if it was something uh council wanted to move forward. And we have some information about uh participation.
Is there, is there a cost recovery on that? Uh this way, I don't know. So plus twenty-four thousand?
Evening, Mayor and City Council. Um so we estimated about a fourteen thousand dollar revenue generation from Saturdays for the entire year.
Okay. Thank you. Uh so now. Yeah, that is slide right there. So I'm going to actually cover high level and then of course Chief Hernandez is here for additional detail and questions. So as councils are waiting, we've been having some challenges with our current program, the way it's structured, including being unable to fill vacancies and also having to staff all of the locations. Um assigning unlimited CSOs as well as sworn police officers, so not the most efficient way uh to staff this. And so we sent out an info memo um to council on this last week. And this slide basically covers some highlights from the memo. We also have several backup slides um that uh can compare the different options. So we surveyed all of the other cities that have crossing our programs in the county. We analyzed our program data and also conducted a recent traffic study in terms of locations. And so based on that information, we, we're presenting three options to you. Option one is really continuing the current program, but with additional staffing, because it doesn't work the way it is structured right now. So we would add a uh community um safety officer, basically, to manage the program. Option B envisions contracting out the program, uh retaining all the people that are in boilers crossing guards and making sure they're assigned to locations within Montpelins. Option C, the one, the one thing, and uh Chief Hernandez can go more into detail, but the one thing I just want to point out for option B is the terms of the contract would require them to staff all the locations because they have backups. We unfortunately, because we've had so many vacancies, we have not been able to staff all locations because we just don't have enough CSOs or officers to spend to leave locations. So in terms of public safety, option B is actually, we think, would provide a higher level of service. Um and then option C, which we know is not really a very viable option, but there is an option, you just eliminate the program because everything costs, costs money. And so you can see in terms of the funding we needed, right now, we have a little over five hundred thousand in annual cost budgeted for the program. I want to point out that that is not total cost, so um benefits overhead, that's not included there. So the total, the real cost of the program is actually higher and it also does not account for the fact that we have um sworn police officers and CSOs spending time at these locations. Uh so the option B and uh A and B could range depending on the number of locations. We also had a recent uh traffic study that was recommending based on the number of pedestrians, of pedestrian count. Um maybe some locations could be uh, you know, not, not be included in this program. So basically reducing the number of locations. We understand that that could be a concern, but that is, there is a traffic study and again, more informations in the uh info memo related to that. Uh so, option uh, option B would, uh depending again, if it was less locations, it could range from five hundred and ninety-three thousand a year to option A, so the range you see is then the higher number of locations and option A, that is the one that keeps it in-house um and add staffing. And that's a little over a million dollars. And so in addition to ongoing cost for option A, which would, which we would be staffing with the CSO, we would also need a vehicle for the CSO. That's a one-time cost of seven thousand. And again, we, we've been really struggling after these events, we've been struggling with recruitment and management challenges. And so again, if we were to keep the same program, we would definitely need to add staffing. Uh because it's, it's not, um it's not a sustainable program right now. Um and I talked about surveying other cities. So sixty-four percent of the cities that have a program use a contact line. There's two additional ones right now that are evaluating going to get a plan, so then there would only be one. And I think it's the same uh but the same challenge in terms of just being able to recruit, keep people, manage them. Uh we did, uh we didn't talk too much there, but we did talk in the info memo about funding sources as well. So there's different models, um there are programs that are funded by some different programs that are funded just by the city and programs that are funded as a partnership. So that's something we could also look at. We never had that before, but we could look at that as a cost-sharing arrangement. Um and I think we have one more slide unless you want to just talk about this or we can finish this slide and then come back for some questions.
Okay. So how much uh, how much more do we need? Because I was thinking about taking a five-minute break, because I think it's it.
I have, oh, I have only one more slide to cover and then I think council, you may want to take a break and then have council discussion. So I'll just quickly cover the remainder of the. And then everybody come. Um the next, uh yeah. So this is the last of the referrals. It was recently requested of my next step as part of the council prioritization policy adoption. And as we understood it, the intent of this request was really to ensure that higher priority items could move forward without needing to wait until the next annual budget process. So as we, we've discussed several times this evening, the budget process does provide council the context and priorities, right, for, for decision-making related to funding and resources. So an item added outside of the budget process would take the staffing from other client items. So one of the things we just wanted to lay out there is we could look at different models as to how this could be accomplished in terms of setting up funding. But one of the things that we wanted to just put out there for your consideration is maybe a more informal which that has worked for similar items in the past. So for example, if council considered something a high priority, we were asked to bring it back for discussion and potential funding options. And you know, but then it will be council as a whole, not an individual council member requesting it. And then we've done a pilot program and then if something is successful, wants to be continued at a long, on a longer term basis, then that could be considered during the budget process. So some examples that we've had, I think it's been the pickup off pilot, the senior center pilot, the uh mobile shower and laundry pilot. I think we did a large item pickup pilot. So there is, without setting aside funding and taking away from maybe other things you want to fund, that could be an option to consider that you would, if, if there was interest in something that really needed to move forward and on, wait for the next budget process, uh direct uh staff to come back with a discussion with some funding options and uh again, maybe funded for, you know, kind of the remainder of that year and then consider it on an ongoing basis. So just something to consider for this one. And um I think that concludes the session here. So available for questions, obviously. And then provided additional.
Thank you, Audrey. Um does anyone have any questions or do you want to take a five-minute break? I hear this is fresh. Thank you.
Councilmember Barbara Dillo.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Liam.
Aye.
Councilmember Fran.
Aye.
Mayor Montana.
And I, thank you. So moving on to, so we were taking, we're taking that off. So now moving on to number two, develop a plan for future solar panels at city facilities. Council discussion, any one?
Mayor, vice mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I would think like because of the, the Inflation Reduction Act, I think there are potential to get that funding from other sources. That to get that 125,000 to 147,000 for disability study. I think if we can put this aside and, and I look for staff to look around for grants because there are a bunch of them. We're going to tap on the Silicon Valley Clean Energy for this one too. And I'm looking at deputy director doing to get some money from SBC. Okay, so I'll put that aside. I'm moved to put this aside and to look for ways to fund this disability study.
So can I ask for some clarification? So you think it's, it's a good priority. However, you're asking to, because if it's a priority, usually you want to take action on it. So if you're saying to put it aside, then you're not going to prioritize it. Is that your, what you're saying?
I think it's a good idea. But the thing is, the funding for the disabilities study should come from someplace else, not the general fund.
Can I have some comments from the staff on that?
Yes, Mayor. So that's how we took it, that it's still a priority, but that we don't want to use general fund dollars to do the plan. So we should be seeking grant opportunities for that.
Right, okay. So it's, it's a priority, but it won't be moved on until, because we suffer hard consultant and so forth, right?
Well, we'll, we'll seek a grant and then consult. So we'll continue to do that.
Okay, so, but it's still a priority. Okay. Is there supposed to be a vote on this one here too?
I'll defer, I mean, we don't necessarily need a vote on every one of them. So I'll defer to the city clerk and say it turns into how we want it to.
I'm comfortable if you guys just want to vote on the ones who want to move forward. And since this would be one that you're asking staff to defer until such time as they have a grant that we want to vote.
Okay.
And then if somebody wants to move something forward, we'll have a vote on it.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and take a vote or does it, if you want to, consensus?
Yeah, consensus unless there's objections maybe. And, and like the next one, we would be really looking for some feedback on if you want us to move it forward, then would you like us to bring forward some kind of policy option, you know, in the budget? So that's what we'd be looking for in the next.
Okay, so you said the next one that you're talking about, number three.
This part, okay.
So number three, establish a fund for real estate acquisitions. So we already, we're clear that on item number two, there's already closure. We're going to defer that one or two, you can get the funds to move forward, but it's still private. So now we're, item number three, establish a fund for real estate acquisitions. So comments from my colleagues on this one here. Councilmember Ben.
Yeah, I think it is needed to address the looming budget restraints long term. Economic development, we have to prioritize it and, you know, it's, it's a useful tool for us, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Ben. Anyone else have a comment on that? Is this? The sharing, so I don't know which one. Councilmember Lynn.
I, I always want to buy land, property, so in favor of that. But we do need to find out, number one, where, which property and how much. So right now, I'm in the air of the dollar amount. Unless I missed it, you know, during the presentation.
We do not have any specific land you're talking about. This would establish a fund to buy, to look for opportunities to buy land. So really today, what we're speaking direction on is if this is an area of interest, we will look at the policies we have in place, the reserve policies, and bring recommendations forward as to allocating the money towards this priority area. And then it'll build every year.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Leon. I, I'll say my comment. I, I think this is a, an investment for our city. It doesn't mean we're going to buy land right away. It's, it's creating a fund so that way we can be prepared. Usually when there are recessions, land goes down. And it would be a great opportunity to have the funding there so when you could just take action. I think it's a good investment for our city. So I really like number three, establish a fund for real estate acquisitions for the future. So is there anyone else that would like to? Okay, so is there consensus? Yes, okay, so this is a private. We're going to take a vote on this one, okay? So let's take a vote. Motion, second.
Second.
Oh, a motion, sorry. So who made the motion? I guess I'll make the motion and then there was a second by.
Second, nobody did.
By Anthony. And by Barbara Dillo. Thank you, Councilmember Barbara Dillo. And now we'll take a vote.
Councilmember Barbara Dillo.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Liam.
Aye.
Councilmember Ben.
Aye.
Mayor Montana.
Aye, thank you. And I now understand, because you know, whenever it involves real estate, you need to take a vote. Thank you. Okay, item number four, explore a lease for the vacant land adjacent to the library for city use. And this is the one, right, we have the library and it's been, it's been vacant for a very long time. But as you recall, the city sold it. It used to belong to the city, the city sold it and there was a recommendation for us to lease it. But my, in my opinion, if we're going to spend money on it, we should, we should be able, if we're going to spend money on vacant land, we should be owning it or looking to buy it. But those are my thoughts, so I want to take some comments from my colleagues. Anybody else?
But I heard last meeting that the owners are interested in selling, right?
That's correct. The council wishes us to continue to pursue it, we could continue to reach out. It's just that this is again, one of those items that was approved to move forward and so we needed to bring it back.
Yeah, and you know, you never know, people change their minds, so you never know about that.
I think this is one, if you just want us to continue to reach out, we can do that. If we don't hear back, I mean, nothing really happens.
So I would, I would, for me personally, I would see if you can keep reaching out. At my understanding, the property taxes are pretty high there and you never know, the, the owner might decide to sell it.
And so then do we want to change it to say like purchase and or lease? Or do we want to change it to purchase instead of lease and then make way to that?
I personally would change it to purchase. But again, you know, I want to, and my colleagues to have a say some of that.
Mayor, I'm May. Have you been your, your chief negotiator on this property for the last years? Each time I discuss this with you, the, the request has been for it used to be tied to the sale in the use, to be tied to the sale of the property, meaning that it probably will be encumbered by some use. So tonight, I think what I'd like to hear, rather than have that continuing conversation by go back, go back, go backward, it just feels like Groundhog Day again with them, is that to declare that the council, this council would like that property to be purchased unencumbered, meaning no use tied to it, no specific development or other entity occupying the property for the sole purpose of open space, park space for the city, but no other use. So if it's clean for the property, if the city, if the property owned it, at some point that the city likes to develop it, it would be only the city's discretion on what would happen with that site, what type of open space renovation would occur there.
I totally agree. And if you recall, I think it was back in 2016 or 15, the voters, it came on in the ballot that any, any park or any, and, and that area is designated as a park. It's supposed to be a park. So any land that is a designated park is to be a park, cannot change it, you cannot put any. NFS is on there, it has, it has to be a park. So yeah, I totally agree with you. That's the way, the way you worded it.
Right, so no strings attached. We want to own it there for a, no obligation for the city to do anything other than own that and that seems to special.
Correct.
No way it chooses to.
Any comments from my colleagues? Councilmember Ben.
You have an idea of what that city use is? You know, like, i- if we are going to designate it for city use, is there anything in the work plan that we would, you know?
Thank you, Councilmember Ben. So in the past, the council have discussed either an estate park or an empty theater. So we, we did some conceptual design for, for an empty theater there. But that's all we've discussed. We don't really have any detailed plans.
Yeah, you know, I, I kind of want to break that loop, that ground up a loop. And I'm of the opinion that we just move on and not waste any more time on this. And take a look at, you know, strategic sites that make sense.
It's a priority. But it won't be moved on until for, because we shut her down and so forth, right?
Well, we'll, we'll seek a grant and then, and so, so we'll continue to do that.
Okay, so, um, but it's still a priority. Is there supposed to be a vote on this one here too?
I'll defer, I mean, they don't necessarily need a vote on every one of them, so I'll defer to the city clerk and say it turns into how we want it to.
I'm comfortable if you guys just want to vote on the ones who want to move forward. Um, and since this would be one that you're asking staff to defer until such time as I have a grant, we won't need a vote.
Okay.
And then if somebody wants to move something forward, we'll have a vote on it.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and take a vote or does it have anyone on consensus? Don't you skip it?
Yeah, consensus unless there's objections, then maybe. And, and like the next one, we would be really looking for some feedback on if you want us to move it forward, then would you like us to bring forward? Um, some kind of policy option, um, you know, in the budget, so that's what we'd be looking for in the next.
Okay, so the, as you said, the next one that you're talking about, number three.
This part, okay.
So number three, establish a fund for real estate acquisitions. So we already, we're clear that on item number two, there's already closure, we're going to defer that one or two, you can get the funds to move forward, but it's still private. So now we're, item number three, establish a fund for real estate acquisitions. So comments from my colleagues on this one again. Councilmember Ben.
Yeah, I think, um, it is needed, um, to address the, um, looming, uh, budget, uh, re- restraints, uh, long-term, uh, economic development, we, we have to prioritize it and, um, you know, it's, it's a useful tool for us, so.
Thank you, councilmember Ben. Anyone else have a comment on that? Is this? The sharing, so I don't know which one. Uh, councilmember Lynn.
I, I always want to buy land, property, so in favor of that. Uh, but we do need to find out, number one, where, which property and how much. Um, so right now, I'm on the air of the dollar amount. Unless I missed it, oh, you know, during the presentation.
We do not have any specific land we're talking about, this would establish a fund to buy, to look for opportunities to buy land.
Look for.
So really today, what we're seeking direction on is if this is an area of interest, we will look at the, uh, policies we have in place, the reserve policies, and bring recommendations forward as to allocating the money towards this priority area, and then it'll build every year.
Absolutely. Thank you, councilmember Lynn. I, I'll say my comment, I, I think this is a, uh, an investment for our city. Um, it doesn't mean we're gonna buy land right away, it's, it's, it's creating a fund. So that way we can be prepared, uh, usually when there are recessions, uh, land goes down, and it would be a great opportunity to have the funding there, so when you could just, uh, take action, I think it's a good investment for our, our city, um, so I, I really like number three, establish a fund for real estate acquisitions for the future. So is there anyone else that would like to? Okay, so this, is there consensus? Yes, okay, so this is a private. So we're gonna take a vote on this one, okay, so let's take a vote.
Second?
Oh, a motion, sorry, so who made the motion? Uh, I guess I'll make the motion, and then there was a second by.
Oh, second, yeah.
By Anthony. By Gary, Barbado, thank you, councilmember Barbado. And now we'll take a vote.
Councilmember Barbado. Vice Mayor Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Liam.
Aye.
Councilmember Ben.
Aye.
Mayor Montana.
Aye, thank you, and, and I now understand, because you know, whenever it involves real estate, you need, do need to take a vote, thank you. Okay, item number four, explore a lease for the vacant land adjacent to the library for city use. And this is the one, right, we have a library, and it's been, um, uh, it's been vacant for a very long time, but as you recall, the city sold it, it used to belong to the city, the city sold it, and there was a, a recommendation for us to lease it. But my, in my opinion, uh, if we're gonna spend money on it, we should, we should be able, if we're gonna spend money on vacant land, we should be owning it or looking to buy it, uh, but those are my thoughts, so I want to take some comments from my colleagues. Anybody else have a?
But I heard last meeting that the owners are interested in selling, right? That's correct, but we could, if the council wishes us to continue to pursue it, we could continue to reach out, um. It's just that this is again, one of those items that was approved to move forward, and so we needed to bring it back.
Yeah, and you know, you never know, people change their minds, so, um, you never know about that.
I think this is one, if you just want us to continue to reach out, we can do that, if we don't hear back, I mean, nothing really happens.
Yeah, so I would, I would, for me personally, I would, I would see if you can re, keep reaching out. Um, so, and my understanding, the property taxes are pretty high there, and you never know, the, the owner might decide to sell it.
And so then do we want to change it to stay like purchase and or lease? Or do we want to change it to purchase instead of lease and then make us do that?
I personally would, uh, change it to purchase, but again, you know, I want to, and my colleagues to have a say so with that.
Mayor, I'm in. Having your, your chief negotiator on this property for the last years, each time I, um, discuss this with the owner, the, the request has been for it used to be tied to the sale in the use, uh, to be tied to the, uh, sale of the property, meaning that it probably will be encumbered by some use. So tonight, I think what I'd like to hear, rather than have that continuing conversation by go back, go back, go backward, it just feels like Groundhog Day again with them, is that to declare that the council, this council would like that property to be purchased unencumbered, meaning no use tied to it, no specific development or other entity occupying the property for the sole purpose of open space, park space, or the city, but, um, no other use. So if it cleaned for the property, if the city, if the property owned it, at some point that the city likes to develop it, it would be only the city's discretion on what would happen with that site, what type of open space renovation would occur there.
I totally agree, and if you recall, um, I think it was back in two thousand sixteen or fifteen, the voters, it came on in the ballot that any, any park or any, um, and, and that area is designated as a park, it's supposed to be a park, so any land that is a designated park is to be a park, cannot change it, you cannot put any uh, edifices on there, you have, it has to be a park, so yeah, I, I totally agree with you, so, that's the way, the way you worded it.
Right, so no, no strings attached, we want to own it there for a, no obligation for the city to do anything other than own that, and that seems to special.
Correct.
No way it chooses to.
Any comments from my colleagues? Uh, councilmember Ben.
Do you have an idea of what that city use is? Um, you know, like, i- i- if we are going to designate it for city use, um, is there anything in the work plan that we would, you know?
Uh, thank you, councilmember Ben, so in the past, the council have discussed either an estate park or an amphitheater, so we, we did some con- conceptual design for, uh, for an amphitheater, but that's all we've discussed, we don't really have any detailed plans.
Yeah, you know, I, I kind of want to break that loop, that groundhog day loop, and, uh, I'm of the opinion that, um, we just move on and, um, not waste any more time on this. And take a look at, you know, strategic sites that make sense, um, you know, with our long-range planning. But it's hard for me to see how this fits into all of that, so, but those are my thoughts.
So from my understanding, councilmember Ben, you want to just, uh, drop this off?
Correct.
Thank you. Uh, councilmember Barbado.
Yeah, a question, if I remember it right, uh, Will Hita's community museum came to the council way back when it figures properly, and during the course of, you know, play, tenure that time, they came back again, they, I remember it when they said that they have an issue regards to funding or anything like that, that's why they are not able to push through, uh, the use that they, they really intended that they would establish.
Yeah, that is true, what the initial project of the property with that was assurance to the city that the, you know, new owners would be developing that site, house to the city. And since then, for issues of they, they were counting on developer fee or contributions at some time to them to fund that, which never materialized, and thus they're in a situation of owning a property, paying certain number of property taxes on it each year, and considering disposal, but we were never able to reach agreement because they wanted to have the property covered with the sale of the property, and that's where we never agreed on purchasing the property.
Also, that's the only reason why they don't want to sell it, because, um, you know, they still have that vision, they'll buy it, use it for the.
They would like to be able to, um, have a museum placed on the site, not necessarily by us, but they would need an area of the site designated for the museum and facilities to support the museum.
Are they still working on that?
No, no, we have not had any discussions in, maybe up to a year now, it's been sometime, it was last year, maybe sometime last year was the last time we spoke, but not recent funding.
So we've conceptualized, um, theater and park. Oh. They just speak something. So, uh, do we have any area just to put them here or, or, you know, develop a park for the same purpose?
For, for other things?
Right, so I said, you know, we expect at least conceptualize, whoever acquired that either through this or purchase is an amphitheater or some sort of park.
Some park, and it's included in the, we did the parks master plans, conceptually, it was included, but really again, nothing, because we don't own the property, we didn't for the spend.
Or if the city, uh, purchase that property, would it be out of that condition? Because I think this is from the RBA before.
So.
And then, uh, the terms of the sale, and remember, remember, is that it's tied up to a use, but if it's uh, bought by certain entity, then it gets out of the, uh, condition.
There is no, I mean, they just wanted to make that part of the deal, there's nothing, there's nothing tied to it. They said they would sell it to us at a certain price, if we, if we need to let them build something like reserve a part of the site for their use, or they have something like, well, I'm much higher up, like, some, something like that.
I thought they thought, I mean, they, they tied it to natural healing as well.
No, they did not.
Well, uh, my opinion is that whole is property.
So, is that, all the, all those are your comments?
Yes.
Is there anyone else that would like to, you know, uh, from listening to, uh, councilmember Ben, maybe it is time just to say, you know what, uh, just let it go, and, um, if they're, they can always come to us. They can always come to us, uh, I think we should just, we have been trying, and, um, I wasn't on the council when this land was sold to them, but, um, we, I think we, well, it's, I better not say that, it's a, it's already a done deal, and I think we should just go ahead and uh, let it go. So yeah, thank you for bringing that up, councilmember Ben, because it does make sense, you know, because we have been uh, asking them and asking them, and then just, and then they even raised the price.
That's right.
And we sold it to the peanuts, because they were supposed to build something, so they really reached their contract, whether, if we had to, that's so, yeah, let's just let it go, okay.
They wanted us to pay their property taxes too. You know, yeah.
Well, they breached it, yeah, okay, thank you, anybody else have a comment?
Well, that's good.
Okay, this, I think the consensus will move on.
Um, yeah.
Vice Mayor?
Of course, number five.
We don't need a vote.
So I'm not taking action. So number five, what?
So it'll be, it'll be.
Number five.
Yeah, memorial plaque for a youth skateboarder who passed away, so, so a consensus to, to have a plaque. So an item number five is the memorial plaque for a youth skateboarder who passed away, a long time of his resident youth, um, so is there a consensus? Uh, for me, I think that we should, I mean, we've given plaques memorialize other children that have passed away in our city, um, named parks after, uh, youth, and I think it's, it's, um, you know, it's, uh, something that we should do out of, I think it's the right thing to do, so I'm hoping that my councilmembers will approve this back, is there a? Vice Mayor?
We'll do approve item five.
Is there a second? So seconded by, on then, councilmember on then, and let's take a vote.
Councilmember Barbado.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Liam.
Aye.
Councilmember Ben.
Aye.
Mayor Montana.
Aye, unanimous, so now, uh, we will, I said. Thank you, councilmember, uh, item number six, prepare Vision Zero Action Plan, is there a dialogue for my councilmembers on this?
Yeah.
Uh, Vice Mayor Chua?
Thank you, Mayor, seeing the pause, one-time pause, and also the ongoing maintenance, and also based on the feedback from Assistant City Manager, that we are sort of doing this already, I move not to proceed with memberships.
Is there a discussion, oh, have to be a second, so second and then a discussion or?
Oh, discussion and then second.
So seconded by Lynn, on then. Oh, and there's a discussion on this?
I think if you don't want to move it forward, we don't need a vote, we don't want, unless somebody objects, we can drop it.
Yeah, and I do agree with, uh, Vice Mayor, I've seen the other cities, San Jose, Fremont, and, you know, it just, you've seen all those, what do they call those barriers, and most of them are, uh, they're just there, there's no one riding the bikes, and and I'm thinking about all the money that the city spent on those barriers, I don't know what they're called, the little pillars, cylinders, ballers. Yeah, and I'm thinking, and then, they take away, uh, road space, I just think it's, it's a good idea, I agree with you. So there's a consensus that to move Vision Zero Action Plan.
I have a question.
Uh, councilmember Ben?
Yeah, um, the, the funding that we got from the state with the clean bike lanes, um, does that tie into any of this?
We will continue with that, it's part of the C I D, so we still continue with our bike lanes and kind of keeping them safe. This is just the cost of having an expensive plan that we're saying we don't really need to do that, we have several projects and programs that are going to the same objectives.
Now, this plan is, i- i- is it required by the state or any?
No.
All right, thank you, that's all.
Thank you, the men.
Item number seven, Saturday senior center hours. Is there, uh, Vice Mayor Chua?
Uh, this is one of my favorite initiatives, because I've seen the impact. Now, we got seniors that are working during weekdays, and they have an opportunity to go to the senior center and avail of the different activities, trips, and I'm really, really excited about it, and I'm sure the statistics will show it too, if, if I, Mayor, if I can call on Renee and add to Renee for the statistics as well, thank you, please, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor, so we found, um, a high interest of youth in the Saturday hours. We've had a number of new memberships start since we opened, um, and we're open about on Saturdays, half of the hours we normally are during the week, and we have basically a full day of participation even on a weekday, so we're impressed, um, with the, uh, the interest in the days, uh, this proposal with the twenty-four thousand would, um, add more classes and activities that we surveyed the seniors on and what they're interested in, as well as some additional marketing, uh, to attract more seniors, um, because we are fifty and oversight, so we're here for adults and relatives over the date, so, thank you, if there's more questions, let me know.
Thank you. We should sign off. Is there, are there any more councilmembers that would like to speak on this item?
Mayors.
Vice Mayor?
Move to approve item seven.
There's a second? A second, no, so seconded by councilmember on then. And do we need to take a vote, okay?
Councilmember Barbado.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Liam.
Aye.
Councilmember Ben. Mayor Montana.
That's an aye. Next slide. In this slide. So this is the crossing guards program. Uh, we've all received a memo on some of the different options, um, I don't have it in front of me, but, uh, bring them up.
We can bring the, the slides up, so if we can go to the backup slide in this.
Just scroll down a few slides. Beyond the conclusion, there's a few related to this subject. Slide number forty.
Oh, oh, Liz, not the backup slide, in the same, in the same deck, slide forty.
Our board, yeah, slide forty. You're doing a presentation. Okay, so, um, option A, continue current model, maintain our range to a minimum of eighteen point six, increase department staffing to manage a program. Option B, transition the program management to a third-party contract service, foster management services, option C, eliminate the crossing guard program. So, who's the mic, oh, I'm sorry.
So, um, actually Chief Hernandez can walk us through, um, this?
Turn up the heater in here. Uh, so, uh, good evening, Mayor and Council, I, I think Assistant City Manager in contact covered a lot of it already, um, but just to kind of reiterate and give a little bit of background, so everybody understands, including the public, some of the information that was, um, included in, in the memo. Back in two thousand and six, at that time, council adopted certain criteria to identify locations in the city that shouldn't be staffed for the crossing guard. And the criteria was based on a pedestrian and vehicle count for, uh, the most traveled one-hour period at the different sites. It takes into consideration the geometry of the roadway, types of traffic control signals, stop signs, all these different types of elements. In addition to that, it left room for, uh, space for either the police chief or the city council to identify additional locations to, um, put staffing there for, for taking. In twenty fourteen, there was a traffic study done in the city of Mopetis, and that traffic study identified thirty-four locations where, at that time, it made sense for a guard to be placed at. Due to the complexity of some of those sites, some of them require more than one guard, so out of those thirty-four locations, we budgeted forty-three guards, which included a contingent of five substitute guards in case somebody was to call and say. Fast forward to twenty twenty-two, we did an updated study because the the legislature of, of the city has changed a lot, we had an additional school, which was Mito Natos, and so in the traffic study for twenty twenty-two, using the same criteria that was established in twenty twenty-six, the traffic study identified twenty-one locations, of those twenty-one locations, there are a few that are complex, which requires multiple guards, so to staff twenty-one locations, we required twenty-seven guards to do appropriately. That's the staffing side, that, that's something for council to consider. When you look and transition into the different types of program mo- models, option A, which is the city retaining the program, there has been ongoing challenges, and regardless of how many locations we staff, those challenges still exist. And what those challenges are is recruitment and retention, and that recruitment and retention leads to other issues, which there's a reduction in public safety currently, because we cannot staff all the locations that are currently marked for staffing. What the police department has been doing to maintain public safety is assigning a community service officer or a police officer at these locations to make sure that the kids can run safely. We have to prioritize those sections, and it's impossible for us to cover all of them, so today, every day of the week, there are some of those locations that go without staffing, which is problematic. One of the considerations in, in our analysis, um, had to do with how do we provide the best service to the community, how do we staff all of these locations, and we first started last year with a more aggressive recruiting campaign, we attended community meetings, we went to PTA meetings, we went to some of our larger, uh, face paint organizations expressing, um, the condition of the guard program at that time, trying to see more applicants to come into the program. We also identified, based on what other program models were throughout the county, is that a lot of the other cities had a contract model, so we started to explore that, that's an option. One of the considerations and one of the, the factors that I know is sensitive, the council was sensitive to us, because these guards have, have been part of the police department for many years, was to ensure that no one lost their jobs, and so one of the things that we found was a contract service that will retain all of your guards. And what they will also do is staff all of your vacant positions, because they have roving guards that they utilize until staffing comes up to, uh, optimal levels. They also focus recruitment in the city of which those guards are, uh, come from, so that's their first contingent of recruitment is within the city of Mopetis, and then outside of that, if they need staffing, then they will go beyond that. In most cases, the guards that operate under the contract service are from the jurisdictions or from the cities of which they operate. Some of the recruitment challenges, um, were brought on by COVID, prior to COVID, we had one crossing guard supervisor, thirty-six guards. Today, we have twenty-six guards and one supervisor, to staff all, uh, forty-three of those guard positions, which obviously doesn't work. Out of the twenty-six guards that are available, five, uh, are on the long term, actually, one just came back, so it's four, are on the long-term lack of use, so that leaves us twenty-one guards right now, and so those are some of the challenges that we have, uh, we did look at the pay comparison, how do we compare to the surrounding jurisdictions, and there's a lot of nuances, and it's actually pretty complex when, when you look at it. Hourly rates can be deceiving, because crossing guards have what's called a split ship, and California law says that if you have a ship that is interrupted by non-working non-aid hours, we are required to pay one hour at minimum wage that goes unworked, so basically what ends up happening in all these crossing guard programs. So basically, what ends up happening in all these crossing guard programs is they're onsite hours, and there's actual eight hours. In our scenario, we have guards that work two hours a day, up to four hours a day. But on average, our guards work three hours a day, but they're paid for four hours a day because of the split shift differential. So when you take the split shift into differential into an account, it's not actually eighteen forty-six that they're making an hour. In our scenario, they're actually making twenty-four dollars and seventy-something cents per hour, for work hours. And so there's a lot of different things that go into it. I know in the memo, there's a chart that shows the different cities. Some cities choose to pay the split shift differential offensively. So they pay a higher hourly wage, but then they don't have to pay the split shift differential, or they only have to pay a portion of it because the wage is so high that it's offset. So I know there's, there could be discussion, and there's been comments from the guard program and others that increasing hourly wage can be a solid problem. It may, but it also may not because the way that you display it may not actually. If you look at the contractual services that our county and retain the eighteen forty-six per hour rate, we would be on the higher end of the hourly rate for the contracted services when you compare us to other cities. Using our lowest in our county that utilizes the contract service as an example, they pay sixteen dollars an hour for their hourly rate. That's going to move up to sixteen forty because these members were fired in January, but minimum wage is sixteen forty as of January first. So that's the lowest. But they also pay double split shift differential in that particular city. We are currently, if we were to move to a contract service, we'd be the highest. But if we were not to move to a contract, then the second highest is seventeen. And take that back, it's eighteen dollars. So there's a lot of different factors to consider. If we retain the program, we still have a staffing challenge. We still have to get people in the door, and there's still places in locations that go on staff. There's also still going to be a reduction in other public safety services because those CSOs and those police officers are assigned to those intersections and unavailable during that period of time to respond to other calls. So it is a challenging thing. There's a lot of things to consider. And I know it's a very important community benefit to have somebody present at a location. And I think before you, you have two options that are difficult ones, but I am available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions, comments on this item?
Mayor.
Vice Mayor Chua.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I was going to ask Chief about the recruitment, and you answered that by saying that recruitment will be done at the resident. Ah, okay, that's right. So that's good. My question is, the benefits that our crossing guards is getting right now, will it be comparable to the contract? Not the salary, but the benefits, if if they have benefits.
Give a moment as I think about this, and I know Captain Miller with me. I don't think that there's many benefits within the crossing guard program because they're part-time employees. I mean, there is certain, some that are that were part of a public retirement system do get some benefits. There is one, actually she resigned from the program. So we don't have any current bars that would fall under the par system. There's workers' comp that gets paid into their program, and maybe I can rely on the finance director to help. I don't believe that there's any, other than par, which that only impacted.
So whatever they're getting, I don't want to take it away from them. That's all concerned about. Because they're not getting anything, that's okay.
Correct. There's, there's not going to be any loss of pay. If we were to transition to the contract, there would be no loss of pay under that scenario. That's correct.
I know we give them boots and wrinkles. Will the third party will be that as well?
Yes. So the contract service, if we can go to the next slide where it says pros, please. So when you look at the two models, and of course, there's pros and cons to everything, but this is the pros slide. What we get with a contractual service, which is option B in the columns you see, is ensuring that all guard positions are staffed. That's the primary benefit to to the program. They handle all scheduling, supervision, staffing, training, recruitment, all the workers' compensation portions of it. They handle complaint resolution. They do onsite inspections to ensure guards are present. They provide uniforms and all safety equipment. All of it is is completely done by the service. If there's anything that's ever a concern, there will be because of the contractual service, there will still continue to be some oversight by the police department to ensure that we are getting our money's worth if we're to do that. Other benefits. Well, they're there. That's, that's pretty much the the keys.
The one concern that I think we should put in the contract, if it's okay with the city attorney, is is our guard should not be part of the roving guards. I don't like that.
So we, we, we talked about that, and they would not be. That is a, it's not a condition of employment that they do that, but there are some guards that choose to do that. And I'm not a hundred percent certain about this because the discussion was a long time ago. But I believe if they're choose to be a roving guard, there's some pay incentive for them. But they, they come out of our pool of guards, and they go into a different pool of guards within that.
If they want to.
If they choose to.
If they choose to, but not as part of their employment.
Correct.
That's what I'm trying to get. And then the last one. I know you mentioned about the calculation of the of the pay. I just want to make sure that if we move to this third party, whatever our crossing guards are getting in terms of net, it should not go lower.
It will not. So what ends up happening is within the the fees that you saw on the previous slide, if we can go backwards just one. When you look at the actual crossing structure, that includes overhead. So we're actually, even though our guards are getting eighteen forty-six an hour, that's the, and we get to decide that too, right? If we wanted to do more with the contract service, we can do that. The rate for the guards stays the same. But we are actually charged more than eighteen forty-six per hour if you were to do the math for those two figures because it includes overhead. It's identical to the numbers that you see in option A. If you look at overhead costs, if we were to retain the program at thirty-six guards and thirty-four locations with overhead, it costs the city one million ten thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. Apples to apples comparison, if you were to go to option B, fully burning overhead cost, it would be seven hundred and eighty-four thousand three hundred and thirty-nine.
I would also suggest that the council agrees to as an incentive to moving to a third party to give some sort of raise to to their current crossing class.
So a hundred percent at our discretion. What, what happens, City Council, for example, they recently, their contract, they recently elected to increase their hourly wage to twenty dollars. So they just work with ACSM. In this case, that's who their contract service is. And that's, it changes the figures, obviously, the cost to the city. But that was something that they were going to do when I asked what they had to answer.
I think, I, I think that will be the incentive for them to stay in our current crossing guards. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief.
Councilmember Robertio. What comment?
Crossing guards do currently have, like, now. Currently staffed positions. We currently have twenty-six guards on paper. Well, one supervisor had twenty-six guards, so twenty-seven. But five of the, four of them, on this return, are long-term unavailable. So that leaves me with twenty-two guards staffed position plus one supervisor.
Okay. So you said, you know, the difference between other thirty-four locations and twenty-one. Two thousand fourteen for thirty-four, twenty-one once past year. Is that because you, traffic has improved, stuff like that? That's why when you use the same metric to decide which locations needs crossing guard, it probably just depends on one.
Correct. So what, and I'm sure that Steve Chan can speak better to this, but I'll try, I'll take a shot at it before we move the microphone. Essentially, what happens is they contract with a service that sits at the intersection, and they count the number of pedestrians that cross and compare that with the traffic flow. In this case, and to my surprise as well, there was a reduction in sites. The reason for that, I don't know. It could be many different things. It could be people that commute out of the area, they take their kids with them, and they go to school somewhere else. It could be a lot of different things. It could be homeschooling because I believe the attendance in schools did decrease as part of, you know, COVID. This was done after that, but study was done when the school was that full. And so unless there's more comments, and you might have Steve to speak to how to explain the drop in pedestrian.
I think I'm good with that.
You're okay with that?
Thank you, Steve. So, but the staffing that we have right now is for the thirty-four locations or continue?
The budgeted staffing? The budgeted, what we're trying to do right now is staff thirty-six, thirty-four locations is what we're trying to do now because that's what current model is. So there is, there is some decision by council if we're going to continue that. Or do we reduce it to the twenty-two?
Having a lot of issues trying to do that.
I'm sorry.
We're having issues trying to do that.
A hundred percent. We cannot cover them all. Correct.
Okay. And if we go to option B, then we're rest assured that those, what now, thirty-four locations, one location is needed by staff, and.
That's crossing guards. It's part of the choice. The moment the signature goes on the piece of paper and the fact that it happens, whatever we choose, whether it's thirty-four locations or twenty-one locations, there's that.
Yeah, I'm going for option B. What my, my one vote?
I, I will also be going with option B. You know, I, I think that if I can menu for doing everything you can to accommodate the existing crossing guards with respect to their service to the city. Obviously, you know, a lot of these sites do need to be prioritized, as you mentioned. But I think that that, you know, third-party vendor that we've identified and being able to retain most, if not all, of our existing crossing guards, that that gives me a lot of comfort in terms of, you know, the the safety and security of our community going forward. So and and of course, allowing our CSOs to perform other duties that, you know, aren't prioritized within the district department. So I concur with my colleague.
So just a friendly reminder that we're just in discussion right now, and I think you don't, we don't vote on it now unless it seems to me that we have to discuss it, and then, then we do. Because we haven't heard other folks to, we might have to get a lot of interest. So let's have a customer minute.
Thank you, Mayor. So do they have a time prior on this contract? She, can we get out of the contract any time or bind to the contract?
So there's not a contract in place yet, and that's obviously something that we would include. And just as a general practice, there's usually an escape clause within the contracts that are written. And so I'm certain that that's something that we can, it sure happens to the city to be honest.
I'm, I'm with option B. It makes sense. Number one is not going to use your SRO.
CSO.
Yes. Okay, we're, we're not taking staff away from the department just to do crossing guards job. And it saves money, and we are sure to have enough staff for all the locations that's needed. And this is for schools, children, students, and teachers. The.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. I'll, I'll put in my thoughts. First of all, I've spoken to city manager, then to the chief about the concerns of the crossing guards. And it's, it's not really a matter of, you know, the pay. These crossing guards live there, they're part of, part of our community. And, you know, they, they have a good relationship with the parents and the children. And they have told me that they're, they're not, they do not want to be outsourced. Because that's what it is. And once you outsource, there really is no control. I mean, they could, for all we know, they could lay people up. They're not making enough profit. And that's my concern. There's, there's no control. And these crossing guards, they love doing this because it's, it's like family. They tell me, you know, and they, they really are against a, a third party coming in and being their, their boss. They love being part of the police department. It's, you know, they take pride in it. And I know they're very, they're very adamant. They really, and they're begging me, please don't, please don't. Didn't use the word outsourced, but they, basically, that's what it is. So I'm, I'm not, I'm going to stick with option A with. And I, I really feel that we, if we give them a higher raise, at least twenty dollars an hour, it, you'll attract more folks, and I really feel that we have to be more aggressive in our recruitment program. You know, a lot of these folks, they love doing what they do. And I, I just feel that it's, having a third party just changes the whole the family perceptions more. They, they love doing this. I mean, I, I know, I've known so many crossing guards that have, that do this. And they, they just tell me they don't want an outside buddy. And I know it's budgeting, but this is something that is more than, it's a, it's a social thing, and it's, it's a, you know, it's because from the heart. So I'm going to go with option A with an increase of twenty dollars an hour. I think they deserve it. I mean, our kids deserve it. It, it's part of our Mopetis family, you know, we, we need to make sure that that the morale is in place. So that if, okay, let's say that you do go with them, you're going to have so many that are probably just going to quit. And then you'll have outside people coming in. So like I said, I'm, I'm sticking to option A with a twenty-dollar increase. And that's, those are my thoughts. So let's go for the vote. Chief?
Ju- just for the benefit of the conversation, there's two cities that are experiencing the same challenges as us. I'm, I'm not going to mention the cities because they are in the process of a transition or at least proposing a transition. One of the cities pays twenty-three dollars per hour, and they have the same challenges as us. The other city, and they pay a split shift differential. The other city pays twenty-six dollars for a vaccine per hour. They don't pay a split shift differential. Just, I, I only offer that because in the context of the fiscal discussion, I don't know that twenty dollars is going to get us where we need to be. And based on the experience of other cities, I don't feel that twenty-three dollars is going to get us where we need to be. We're obviously a different city, but it is something.
Well, I, for me, it doesn't change my mind, so going to option A, it's my, my, I'm really adamant about it, but that's my one vote. Yeah. Vice Mayor Chua.
Thank you, Mayor. The concern I have is is the fact that we cannot recruit. That that is one of the main, major issues that, that that will base my decision. We have thirty-four locations, and we only have twenty-one that are being taken care of right now. And also, I know, you know, recruitment is hard. And we have twenty-seven guards and we need thirty-six. I suppose also, if, I don't know how it's going to blend into this program, if some reason I would. if some reason I would ask this chief to make sure that the crossing guards are in touch with the department, still make them feel part of the department, even though they're working for a third party. And I would uh that would be something maybe program for them. Because I I hear Vice Mayor Joe Montana's concern, because they wanna be part of the, they're very proud to be part of the police department, somehow create a program for them not to lose that relationship with the department. And and that's it, and then also the fact that we're freeing up CSOs is also, is also an advantage for going for a third party. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, um as I mentioned, it's uh once you outsource, once you take it out of the hands of the city, there's, you can't tell, and you can't tell private company what to do. You suggest, but you can't tell them. Also, I really feel that we just need to uh step it up on the recruitment, I mean, I could probably make a flyer, walk every neighborhood, drop it off at every house, and I'm sure I'll get some folks, because I know plenty of folks who would probably jump on on this, it's part-time, get twenty dollars an hour.
You're calling question.
But you know, that those are my my uh my thoughts, I'm still gonna be with option A, even though I, everybody wants to be option B, but that's, that's okay. So let's have a council member, Ben.
I'll uh move uh with option B.
Is there a second?
A second with uh a friendly amendment, if uh council member Ben agrees, I would like to raise their rate to at least twenty, how much was it that you said, uh key?
We, uh council member Joe, we spoke about a lot, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Joe, we spoke a lot of, had a lot of numbers. Um I can, are we talking about the Sunnyvale number or?
Do you think I hear about twenty-six that much is better?
No, so what I was saying is, uh in the context of of raising their rate for recruitment purposes, there's a city that pays twenty-three dollars per hour plus a split shift differential, and they have the same challenges as us, they're looking to go to a contract service. There's another city in this county that pays twenty-six dollars and some change uh per hour, they don't pay a split shift differential, and they're also having challenges.
Okay, or I don't, you can just pay twenty-five dollars with the same uh compensation structure as they have now.
I think that in the context of this conversation, that might be something that we need to come back with, because it's going to change those figures.
The motion is, yeah, it's, the motion is a, an amendment. This is an amendment to the motion with with the friendly amendment or whatever that number is, so you don't have to come back.
So we, I'm sorry, sorry, I I um with with the information um the chief Hernandez has provided with the uh figures um from our counterpart cities. Uh I I I'm not going to uh entertain that uh amendment, uh but you're welcome to make an alternative.
Yeah, I have my second. And I would like to move to, oh, you were asking, you have a second?
Is there a second for uh for uh council, council member uh Vance's motion?
I'll second.
Second, if I brought a deal, is in your discussion, uh any discussion on, Vice Mayor Joe?
Is this the right time to do uh alternative motion, see if you're turning? I would like to make an alternative motion to to move option B with uh with the first seven hundred eighty-four thousand three hundred thirty-nine, that one. And with the with the addendum of increasing the rate of the current um passing cars. And in numbers dependent upon, should I make a specific note? What do you suggest, assistant, to be mentioned?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, I think we would look at it, because again, we're looking to be competitive, he has the information. I think Chief Hernandez just mentioned that Sunnyvale increased to twenty dollars an hour, so we can look at that as an option, and it'll come back as part of the budget. Okay, so and with an addendum of increasing the hourly hours to our rate to a competitive rate.
Is the maker of the motion fine with that?
No, this is, this is an alternative motion.
I know.
Sorry, I run the second.
So do you want a second, a second to the to the alternative motion, because you supersede the first one then, the second? Okay, guys on the floor, so your motion.
Then you vote on the other.
So so we're gonna vote on uh Councilmember Vance's motion. Let's take a vote.
Councilmember Barbara Dunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Vice Mayor Joe?
Me.
Councilmember Leah?
Aye.
Councilmember Finn?
Aye.
Mayor Montano?
No. So uh three, two, so option B is uh pass, pass, all right, thank you very much. Moving on, now we're going after other council referrals, number two established with?
Mayor, if I may interject, I I think um the chief still needs feedback on whether they should pursue option B with the thirty-six sites or with the twenty-sevens, uh sorry, thirty-six guards or twenty-seven guards.
Okay, so do you want to repeat that for the audience, so?
I can ask the question again, so the second piece to it is not just the the option of the model of the program, but it's also the locations. And so the the question would be, do we continue with the thirty-six guard model, or do we transition to a twenty-seven guard model?
That's right.
So um I I like um it's thirty-six.
Thank you, so moving on to um the next item. And this is establishing funding source to fund urgent items and identify through the prioritization process. And Vice Mayor?
I mean, I introduced this because of some frustrations that I have last year. Like the like we, like waiting for the budget, like work projects, like smaller projects that we do, we introduce as a council, and we have to wait for the budget for certain projects. But what I heard from the assistant, the city manager, Ashley today, there is a way that we can do this without really setting aside funds. And I would like to hear that again before I would go on this one.
Uh sure, thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh so what we wanted to offer up for consideration is, there's items that come up through the prioritization process, so the council feels a high priority to move and they do not want to wait for the next budget. Uh you can always direct staff to bring it back for consideration with some funding options, we can do that, and again, because we like to have most of the decisions made just for the organization through the budget process, one way to manage this would be maybe moving forward with limited-term funding, and then considering the ongoing funding through the annual budget process, so that we are looking at it in the context of all of them.
Okay, there's another piece to this, because this is the funding source. There is another piece which is important as well, that I did not verbalize last time, is the uh FTE, the labor, availability of labor to do the project. So how would you solve that?
And so, so when we bring it back for consideration, we've typically been capturing like what is the total cost? So that includes not just, you know, any any consultant contract or actual installation of something, but also staffing costs and all of that, and staff hours. And so again, if it came to council, we would, we would offer up if there's particular staff that's working on something, and we would have to kind of get them to now divert their attention, we would point that out to council. Any impacts, and then council could give us direction as to whether that was okay with them, and they still wanted to move forward with this new item.
Okay, that sounds good.
That that's it, and thank you for the clarification, that. I mean, I would withdraw item number two.
Do uh do we need a second for that?
Okay.
You don't need to. All right, so we're going to withdraw item number two. And now, that's it?
Uh yes, unless council had any other thing to provide, I know Vice Mayor has asked about um something else, so if there's any other feedback for Vice Mayor?
Do you, do you, do you want us to give you some some projects that we're thinking, or when you give this to, uh if there's ideas you have, yes, we would like to hear that.
So some clarification, is this the time to bring some of uh the referrals that we have already brought before, but they were taken off? Or is it during announcements or any new ones?
We've typically been using the announcement process, but because we're talking budget and they're not ahead of the budget, I think it's okay for us to just hear, you don't necessarily have to vote on it. You know, it would be helpful for us to know if there's certain things uh you have a council would like us to look into um without the announcements.
Oh, you know, okay, that's great, thanks for the clarification, so Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, I would like to, uh the open, the reopening of the theme center that's already there, right?
Uh.
That one is on the list, and we'll be talking about that next week, so you'll decide whether to prioritize that or not.
Okay, but also want to explore, this is getting feedback from the community to we have thirty-five parks. I want to know which parts are are suitable for for pickable permanent, permanent location. And I would like to also, in terms of, I would like public safety, I would like to explore enhancement to the ALPR or automatic license plate reader, I would like to explore that. Because this is in conjunction with the the feedback from the residents having, you know, crimes, the neighborhood crimes, and and also the recent burglary over at City City. So I would like definitely to look into that. And the waving of the senior, please, that will not be, we will bring that as part of the master schedule discussion. And and I want to know, because you got that three million dollars from Congressman O'Kanna, I want to make sure that we have staff to move this to to start this program ASAP.
Yes, so we will be putting that, putting a program forward and ready that, and will include uh whatever staffing is needed to deliver the.
And also, I would like to request since a big part of the budget is dependent upon the ARPA, I would like to have an update on the ARPA, maybe a session or an item on the agenda.
Uh it's scheduled for February twenty-first, I will be talking about program update and reallocation of any funding if you want to consider that.
Right. I think that's all for now, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, is there anyone else that would like to, the council member Barbara Deal?
Yes, I would like to explore a senior ordinance. Uh there is a legislative right, like history and other jurisdiction that caters for uh discovered potential services and goods, so maybe you could explore that. Uh it's based on, that jurisdiction based that the constitution in regards to right of life, uh you know, like the elderly and that, and I I believe in passing a passable uh policy of ordinance to that. And see if we can do, we can implement it, would you like?
If I could get some clarification, council members, but this is, it don't have services and goods, just comes not, in non-city programs as well, so like across the city? So is it things we provide?
No, so uh let's see how it is possible that it works in this jurisdiction, but uh you know, I I know my jurisdiction base that I have this uh law in regards to uh giving a blanket senior system for their services and uh goods. If we can explore that, then twenty percent of this company, they go to Donalds, they go to the team or uh things like that. Yes, if you want. And then I can help with with ideas on that, because I already have that.
Thank you, uh council member, is there anyone else? Okay, so I have a couple of them, so I have a few, so I I'd like to bring mine back that were there, that were taken off. For example, the consulate office, the EDC corporation. And there were a few other ones that I will, I guess, the just the ones that that were already, that were taken off.
We we can look at the list, and if you want, and then uh we can get that to you, and you can let us know.
Okay, then there were, there were a couple of them that I brought up to the city manager, um it, one of them is um you know, the Albeza Adobe, it's a, it's a touring place where people can go to, and it's really great, however, the parking is limited. And I would like to have the city negotiate with the church next door to open up half and and provide parking, and we can uh do some 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 type of an agreement, where they can, we can open it up for there's more visitors, because I know it's a really, the parking is horrible there, and it's a really nice gem for uh students and tourists that come and visit the Albeza Adobe, but it's the parking issue, and we can, we can have a church probably some type of an agreement for them to uh share that space, and I don't know if there's gonna be a cost to that, or look into that. Uh the other thing is uh in the entrance at City Hall, uh most of the people that wanna see the city clerk, they have to go to the cashier to ask if they don't have a cell phone, so I would like to see a phone number at least listed by the door, uh by the elevator of the city clerk, so that way they can just uh call in. Um the other thing is, I know with unified Mel Peters, I would like to make sure that we have the infrastructure, the roads, maintenance of parks. Um also, Main Street revitalization, have infrastructure, the underground utilities, or the street lighting. Um so that we can put lights on the trees and and have it nice for, because we're trying to revitalize the area. Um but one of the problems is, we don't have the underground infrastructure, and I've already spoken to both of you about that. Also, uh I would like to see if, uh have the city look into a police substation in the southern part of Mel Peters, we really need, uh the city's growing, there's an increase in crime. there's an increase in crime and it would be really good to have the city covered. And as the population grows and this bar becomes more accessible, it'll probably be more crime, and it's near that area, so we I'd like to look into the city to open up a substation. And navigation center, uh safe place for the own house to, it's a lot. But this is the time to do it. Navigation center, to look into that, and I know that uh you've already made an appointment with the city of Fremont, I'm hoping you have, so.
We are in the process of working.
Okay, great, so that way, uh they're a model, we can check it out. Also, Selwyn Park, that was one of the ones that I had uh wanted to be on that priority list, but I think that's an area that it needs to be, I mean, that's one of the low-end areas and it always gets neglected. And I think we really, we really need to uh invest in including that little park for the kids. And um and of course bar, but is it the same one that we brought up today, so that's, that's a, a really good investment. And um there was a couple more that I will I want to create a, I don't know if I should put this in announcement or this is enough as far.
At this time, we just keep, would you have really voting on which one to vote for?
Okay, so I, I, I would like to create a public safety task force. In the beginning, I was thinking about a uh, a subcommittee, but it would be limited and, or an ad hoc committee, because we have all the, the crime has been increased and we just had a shooting at, so uh Seaton City. And it's, we really need to start brainstorming from the community, what, what ideas, what can we do uh to make sure that the public is safe? So I would like to create a public safety task force, and I'm not sure if this is the time to take a because this is not one of my, wasn't a new one, to take a vote on this, or to get feedback on the council members, is this the right time or not yet?
I think just ideas, because some of this, I mean, it may not necessarily be a budget item, so we're just taking it in. We'll see what we can incorporate in the budget and for some big ticket items, I mean, we're gonna want the council to provide the action.
Great, great, um okay, so those are it for now. And uh these are some big i- items, but they're for the community, so. Thank you very much, okay, this is, oh, Councilmember Ben?
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to be brief, um and ultimately, um you know, I, I want us to um continue building a positive reputation for uh employees, uh future employees to work here. Um and, you know, I think one of the biggest challenges for every city, for every agency is um within recruitment is um the cost of living. And so um, you know, as the housing crisis continues to um uh exacerbate, um a lot of um employees are finding themselves um moving out of state, moving out of the area to um areas where they can live where they work. And so ideally, we can provide um a, a um housing um platform for our own, for our employees to actually uh live in the city that they, they work in, they um they care, they care about, so I, I'd like to explore uh workforce housing opportunities um for uh prospective employees and, and for our existing uh employees, I know I it's gonna go a long way in terms of retention, um if we can have folks actually living here. Um tied to that, um as a means of uh financing, I'd like for us to explore uh public banking, um you know, perhaps in the form of a credit union that our uh employees can utilize, um so they can have access to um rates um that allow them to actually um finance their first home uh or finance um their, their cars. Um, that's an investment uh in our own um staff and future staff. Um and then lastly, along those lines, um as a perk of working in Malpitas, you know, a lot of employees are muting and if, if we can have a um transit passes as uh free, free, free transit for folks to uh be able to get here, I, I think that's um, you know, public transit is always a good investment, in my opinion, uh and when you integrate it uh with the workforce, um you know, you, you have a cyclical economy that way. Um and it would actually go um a long way towards our um uh green, greenhouse uh emissions um reductions uh goals with our climate action plan, so um those, those are just my uh three asks.
Thank you, uh customer fan, so just piggybacking on your public transit, um so I brought this up last year, but the city told me that they already give those passes, equal passes, so they already give us, they already give us to the employees.
Yes, we, we do.
And uh and, and I like the idea, and I, I like the idea about the uh employee uh place for them to, to live, I guess, I, I like that idea. I do know that San Jose, the city of, the city of San Jose, for um the police department, they let their officers that have an RV park in their, in their, uh I guess in the space, parking space, am I right? I heard that, so maybe we, we might wanna do that too, I mean, it's not a house, but it's a, it's, because they live out, they, a lot of them move out of that area.
That's a good idea, and yeah, any, any more comments? I don't have, bye, Councilmember Allen.
Thank you Mayor. Um, if I could have one request from the staff to contact the, the library to say we can place NACAM in the library. NACAM in, in the library. Um, bounty was supplied, it's had no cost to us, but if this city would content the library and make sure that we are allowed to put it in there. Thank you.
You and Councilmember Ben, you would provide.
Yeah, I have to ask permission from the, from, yeah.
You know, I was trying to get one from, well, not me per se, but uh the, the cons, the board from the ETA, but um when uh the CEO, Nerf Nerea, when she said, no, we couldn't get it because it was a public, so I'm gonna check on that. It was a gift and we can't give out public fund, so I thought it might be better.
It's a benefit.
One of the benefits, my good husband. And yeah, anymore Mayor, the Vice Mayor?
If I may, I just want to piggyback on the Councilmember Barbara Dillon's uh uh suggestion, I really like it, it's a citywide senior discount, because I've seen it in, in the Philippines and they use it a lot, the, the seniors, they love to go to, to to the movies, they get twenty percent discount, they like to eat, they get twenty percent discount, taxi, Uber, whatever. So I guess partnering with the different businesses in Malpitas, that would be good, and I also uh piggybacking on, again, uh Councilmember Barbara Dillon's, that maybe we can start with the seniors, senior sports, and then maybe we can move on to you know, to our, and then our, our, or whoever else that we can, we can pilot that with the seniors, I think.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you Vice Mayor.
Awesome, awesome suggestion.
So, so I do know that ARPA, you know, they do, they do give our, those discounts, but we've, maybe the city can partner with them somehow and connect with them. Because we don't have to do the work, they could do the work. Anyway, all right, good meeting.
Okay.
We're all done with this, uh we'll move on to our announcements, city manager, McCarris, do you have any announcements?
Thank you Mayor Montano, I have no announcements for the special study session.
Hey, any of my colleagues have any more announcements? Well, I guess this was, this is a very, very good meeting, do, do you, do you guys have any comments about the meeting, any councilmembers?
I, Vice Mayor?
I just want to thank the staff, even the ambience, and I haven't eaten my sandwich yet, but still have to point back, but thank you so much, this is really awesome, and seeing all of you in one room. Uh I get to see you guys soon at the chamber, but anyway, uh thank you so much and good feedback, very productive, and I thank my fellow councilmembers and also the mayor, of course, the attorney and city manager and the executive team, thank you all so much.
Well, any more comments?
Okay, so you're done, this meeting is adjourned.
Okay. No, uh that's what I say, it's nice to see everyone in person, you look better. Uh the room feels warmer.
That's a cold feeling. My and Laura.
Thank you so much, everyone, good job, adjourned.